Good afternoon. How do you like it coming to the regular session of the City of South Fulton? At this time, Mr. Kirk, would you call the row?
Mr. Mayor, if people would please entertain the executive session matters.
Yeah, we need to do that.
I move that we close the regular session for October 19, 2018.
So, property move is second. In discussion? All those in favor? Are there anything, are there any actions that were approved?
Yes, Mayor, there are action items that need approval by the council.
Right. But they were not approved in the second session, right?
That's correct, Mayor. So, the first item would be to authorize me to communicate with, send communication to the county requesting that we, I wrote it down, give you one moment. So, that would be communication to the county requesting that you authorize me to submit correspondence, requesting that they approve a trucking restriction along Buckingham Road from Rock Quarry Road to Royal South Parkway in light of your October 3 decision to allow access from Royal South Parkway to I-85.
I move to authorize the city attorney to submit correspondence to the county requesting that they approve the trucking restriction along Buckingham Road from Rock Quarry Road to Royal South Parkway in light of their October 3 decision to allow access from Royal South Parkway to I-85.
Second. The property move is second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Let's pass it unanimously.
And the second item is request for authorization to close on Fire Station 15, which is the Cedar Grove Fire Station, in the amount of $305,794. And this would include approval from the city manager to execute all documents pending the closing. I'm going for the rule of Fire Station 15.
Property move is second. In discussion?
Can you add, as noted by the attorney?
I move that we approve Fire Station 15 as noted by the city attorney, Walker.
I second.
Property move is second. Any discussion? Ms. Ralph.
For clarification, I know that through transition periods that fire stations are typically purchased at a different amount. Can you provide some clarification for the number of votes?
Yes, we are allowed by law, where the county is required, to allow us to take title to the fire station at $100 an acre.
Well, fire stations specifically $5,000, so can, I mean, that's a difference in amounts, so I just wondered.
Well, yeah, so the prices has increased significantly due to the county's financing that occurred before our incorporation. Currently, they have a certificate participation bond, approximately $290,000 that's entangled with the property.
My issue with this would be entangled for what?
Well, they used that as a means of financing. It could have been for this project or another project, but they had used that for, to secure capital.
My, my discussion with that is, as a commissioner of party, that's actually true. And we supposedly had money set aside, we would have, we would look up in the budget, we have enough money to pay for that fire station. So, I just would like to know, as you go forward and you do research, you know, let's find out what happened to that. Because something happened, I don't know what it was, but they wanted to get the bond closed. And we're, we're not, they're smashing up with the money, with the payment of that bond. So, I would like to know what they did, what they did start? Anything else?
Did they, city clerk, did they vote on the closing? To authorize us to close, noted by the attorney?
Not yet, not yet. But they had a motion.
So, you would still, you have a motion to move to vote?
I would, I would attend, I would attend a motion today.
I already got it.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Let's pass it unanimously.
And the last item that I have is to allow me to submit correspondence to Fulton County this month concerning Oak Tree.
Do you want to go on that?
You said this month?
This month. Correct, this, this month.
I'd like to make a motion of authorizing our attorney to move forward with that litigation.
Well, it's not litigation, it's correspondence.
That correspondence.
Second.
Property move is second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Let's pass it unanimously. I also. Ms. Ralph.
Counsel, I think we know the importance of ranking for an industrial to the City of South Fulton as we prepare for the November referendum. I'd like to authorize the staff to move forward with annexation efforts.
Public education.
Public education.
Public education.
Second.
For the friendly amendment, that we make sure that we take into consideration our item 7 concerns regarding the education into certain events, that we specifically, what's my process for, I'm requesting that despite, I'm requesting that an consultant coordinate with me.
Are you saying that, do you? Do you plan that?
Why are you applying? Because I think the city manager said he would work with all city council members to support them with the public education and engagement.
Okay. So, you're applying. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Yeah. Let's pass it unanimously. Okay, I'm sorry, let me. Did you go on that?
Yes.
Yes. You then. Good. I think that concludes your work session agenda, so that takes you to the regular meeting agenda. Mayor William Bill Edwards, Mayor Pro Tem Mark Baker, President, Councilmember Catherine Rowe, Councilmember Carmelita Jones, Councilmember Helen Zee Willis, Councilmember Naima Hilliard, no voice of any, she just called him. She's via Skype, Councilmember Rosie Jackson, and Councilmember Cleve, present. So, Mayor, you have a court. We'll have invitation by chapter, followed by the bench of the legal, please stand.
Let us pray. Once again, we come with an attitude of gratitude to say thank you. We thank you for our presence, but most of all, we thank you for our elected officials, our mayor and our city council. Continue to pour your wisdom upon their heart of God, so that all that they speak and say and do will be according to your will and your way. But of God, we also ask you to remember those who are cancer survivors in this month of cancer awareness, press cancer awareness, with it at all right now in your precious name. Keep us informed, do your will. Let us all say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that takes you to the approval of the consent agenda. You have several items listed on your consent agenda letters, A through O. I do believe that from prior conversation, that you'd like to at least remove one item from the consent agenda.
One is two. It's, it's two, it's several.
Okay.
I, I move that we move resolution selecting city lobbyists, Resolution 2018-063, from the consent agenda, for discussion, for part of the discussion.
I second.
Also, we need to remove the establishing process for appointment of legislative agents, Jackson, resident, Resolution 218-05. Oh, I'm, I'm to the regular agenda, so.
I would like to remove the first reading ordinance for the welcome to the city. First of all, it shouldn't have been on a consent order because it's for the first reading, but I will remove that to a later view.
A later view?
Yes.
What, what ordinance is that?
Order is 2018-036.
That's what letter it is.
Letter I.
Ms. Ralph, do that. I'm sorry.
Yes, I would also like to remove the request for assignment and assumption lease for 5399 on National Highway, for on the regular agenda for discussion. That's F. And then also to the question for the sublease for the City of South Fulton and Fulton County County, to the regular agenda.
I am resolution promoting tourism and development to increase the hotel charges within the city, item now.
And I actually have one. I have an additional request for advice by staff to remove item K, and not for discussion, but just from the agenda completely for today.
What staff did you get that recommendation from?
The chief financial officer.
You want to explain that?
Where does it fall, we're already harmed for elected officials, so it was a mistake, it was a duplication.
You were striking totally.
Yeah, we're already harmed, Richard.
Okay. Thank you. All right, let's, let's get into. Give me a motion, Bill.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the decision to the amendment.
Second.
Property move is second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Let's pass it. Before we, Mr. Kirk, before we go any further, we, we used to have a time for someone on this council to say happy birthday. But today is his birthday, and we would like to say happy birthday to Councilmember Cleve Camerons. He's our official birthday person. We got, you got, I want to do. All right? Mr. Kirk? All right, the next item for your consideration is a request for approval of the regular meeting agenda. I'll attend a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting agenda.
Second.
Property move is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes. That's, that's, you're, you're, that's unanimous. That takes you to the proclamations and recognitions. The first item, which we did in the presentation, is a proclamation sponsored by Councilmember Willis, recognizing Hamilton Bohannon Day.
When I was celebrating, I was the only elementary kid, played in a high school band. And I played in a band director's dance band, and when I became a seventh grader, I started organizing my own dance band. Every Friday night, I played for the white kids that went to high school, and on Saturday nights, I played for the black kids in the hour school. I did that, and I kept both sides of town from having a problem, no fighting, no argument, no nothing. So, I kept the kids off the street every weekend, black and white, and that's how I started my, my band. After I graduated from high school, I had a scholarship, actually, I had two scholarships, one for Florida A&amp;M and one for Clark College, at the time of Clark College. I chose Clark College because I wanted to come to a bigger city because we have more opportunities for me to meet key people, who are great musicians, good musicians, and more outlast to play. I was very used to play, and that's why I chose Clark County. And one of the first guys met Barnes and Henrys. Neither one of them had a name at the time.
This is the life story of Hamilton Bohannon, who learned early the easiest way to make someone smile is through dancing.
My father had a barber shop, he had a cafe as well, with a jukebox in it, and, and the guys would come get their haircut, and they would go over there and eat. And we would play the jukebox, and I was about four years old, and I just danced, I really could dance, and they would give me money.
Bohannon was born here in Newton, Georgia, back when Peachtree Street was just a dirt road.
And I remember when I was a little boy, the street was a dirt street, and you had to water it to, to go out and cool off when it got hot, because you couldn't go to the swimming pool at the time.
What he could do was make a beat, at first, on his mother's furniture.
I got my sticks, and I'd go on her dresser, and I'd just be banging away, banging away, banging away on.
Bohannon kept perfecting those drum skills, and in the mid-1960s, they caught the attention of a 13-year-old kid called Little Stevie Wonder.
Going to Louisville, Kentucky, at Convention Center, he was on stage playing the piano, practicing, and nobody was in there, but just, just I was Stevie. And so, he came as the friend, because I started playing on the piano, on top of the piano, he said, "Oh, man, you play the drums."
Bohannon ended up acting every big Motown act, from Diana Ross and the Supremes, to his good friend Marvin Gaye. Then, in the 1970s, Bohannon stepped out front, topping the dance charts with disco classics like Footstomping Music, and let's start the dance.
So, I decided, all I want to do, I said, I'm going to keep on dancing, and when you're dancing, you're happy.
But now, after more than 50 years, the dance and shoe is on the other foot. Bohannon's Georgia hometown will rename Peachtree Street Hamilton Bohannon Drive.
I feel like dancing, hey, I feel like doing the Bohannon beat.
It's not the first honor given to the music legend, but there's something about this one that really, really moves him.
They gave him a choice, and the mayor said, "Well, maybe you should do it on the street where you were born." And I said, "We can stop right there, and that's what I want to do." I wanted to have it right there where I was born, and, and all the folks to see how it was then, and I want to continue to have the street developed.
When you first found out about this honor, you thought about your parents, right?
I thought about mother and daddy.
Yeah.
And my father, and I'm not ashamed, he said, "He could not read and write." I've never seen a man doing anything like he's done. I mean, for all people. If you, he had a barber shop, and if the kids didn't have a father, they didn't have to pay for no, no, he did all that stuff for them.
Wow.
All of it. And that's kind of hard he had, and I think that rubbed off onto me and the rest of my family.
And something that's still important to you today is passing on the lessons that you learned over your amazing career to young artists, right? You want to make sure young people do this business right.
That's right, because there will be a dark day, and that's in all our lives. There will be a dark day, so you have to prepare for that. And don't take you to King just because of giving an award, because he might thank you what they'll want to say. When deep down inside, you knock into the order.
Congratulations, Hamilton Bohannon, on your induction into the 2017 Old Fame.
Mr. Bohannon, if you'd value, if you please, approach.
As the nation mourned Aretha Franklin, what I learned from that, more than anything else, is that in the City of South Fulton, we have a lot of music legends that are alive that we need to recognize, and we need to pay homage to. And I am blessed to have Mr. Hamilton Bohannon, who is not only a resident of the City of South Fulton, but he is a resident of District 3. And I wanted us to make sure that that video was played, so our city could see how blessed we are to have this music legend in our city still alive. He has made tremendous contributions to, to music, and we are going to honor him today with the City of South Fulton Resolution, whereas Hamilton Bohannon, a major contributor to the world of contemporary music, professionally known as Bohannon, is a multi-talented artist, writer, producer, musician, author, and entrepreneur. Whereas Bohannon was born a native, American and Black American descent, to Willie and Sarah Bohannon in Newland, Georgia. He attended Clark College, now Clark Atlanta University, and is a member of Alpha Phi Alpha fraternity. After graduating from Clark College with a degree in music and secondary education, Bohannon was offered a music scholarship in percussion to attend Indiana University. Instead, he taught public school. Whereas Bohannon left the school system to join Stevie Wonder as his drummer, which further propelled him in becoming a bandleader at Motown Records. Bohannon and the Motown Sound, as his band, was known, that spoke Smokey Robinson, and the miracles Stevie Wonder, Marvin Gaye, The Temptations, The Four Tops, Martha and the Vandellas, Gladys Knight and the Pits, Diana Ross and the Supremes, and the entire roster of Motown artists in live concerts. Whereas disco techno house music, modern dance music, and hip-hop are five genres of music that Bohannon has pioneered and innovated. His style of music, by keeping four on the floor, led to modern dance music. Whereas Bohannon has charted Billboard's Top 100, R&B charts 41 times. His music has been featured in several movie soundtracks, including Empire, Encino Man, Daddy's Little Girls, Entertainment Tonight, several television shows, commercials, films, Jay-Z, Mary J Blige, P Diddy, Snoop Dogg, Heavy D, Justin Timberlake, and just a sum of, and just some of the over 300 artists that have sampled Bohannon's music. And whereas, with the continued growth of Bohannon's music, remains faithful and given to youth and the community. He is an avid supporter of programs that foster communication between adults and teens. He has not only opened his home, but also his heart to further advance the creative, the creativity and vision of children. He leads by example and inspires children and adults to achieve more than imagination can conceive. Now, there it is all, the mayor and city council of the City of South Fulton congratulate Hamilton Bohannon on his service and contributions to the citizens of South Fulton and the nation, and thus hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 9, 2018, as Hamilton Bohannon Day in the City of South Fulton. (APPLAUSE). known as Bohannon, is a multi-talented artist, writer, producer, musician, author, and entrepreneur. Whereas Bohannon was born a native, American and Black American descent, to Willie and Sarah Bohannon in Newland, Georgia. He attended Clark College, now Clark Atlanta University, and is a member of Alpha Phi Alpha fraternity. After graduating from Clark College with a degree in music and secondary education, Bohannon was offered a music scholarship in percussion to attend Indiana University. Instead, he taught public school. Whereas Bohannon left the school system to join Stevie Wonder as his drummer, which further propelled him in becoming a bandleader at Motown Records. Bohannon and the Motown Sound, as his band, was known. That spoke Smokey Robinson and the Miracles, Stevie Wonder, Marvin Gaye, The Temptations, The Four Tops, Martha and the Vandellas, Gladys Knight and the Pits, Diana Ross and the Supremes, and the entire roster of Motown artists in live concerts. Whereas disco techno house music, modern dance music, and hip-hop are five genres of music that Bohannon has pioneered and innovated. His style of music, by keeping four on the floor, led to modern dance music. Whereas Bohannon has charted Billboard's Top 100, R&B charts forty-one times. His music has been featured in several movie soundtracks, including Empire, Encino Man, Daddy's Little Girls, Entertainment Tonight, several television shows, commercials, films, Jay-Z, Mary J. Blige, P. Diddy, Snoop Dogg, Heavy D, Justin Timberlake, and just some of, and just some of the over three hundred artists that have sampled Bohannon's music. And whereas, with the continued growth of Bohannon's music, remains faithful and given to youth and the community. He is an avid supporter of programs that foster communication between adults and teens. He has not only opened his home, but also his heart to further advance the creativity and vision of children. He leads by example and inspires children and adults to achieve more than imagination can conceive. Now, there it is all. The mayor and city council of the city of South Fulton congratulate Hamilton Bohannon on his service and contributions to the citizens of South Fulton and the nation, and does hereby proclaim Tuesday, October ninth, 2018, as Hamilton Bohannon Day in the City of South Fulton.
Thank you very much. My daughter April. And my two big sons and all. I want to say something. I've been out here forty-two years. I saw the whole neighborhood grow up. And during that time, I've had about fifty years of going back to the youth, youth movement, motivations, and I've had Sunday School sermons. And when I was coming up, I couldn't go to the, to a park. I couldn't go to a swimming pool. So when I bought my house, I had all the trees cut down the back and I made it into a park. And I welcomed all the kids in the neighborhood to come there every year at my expense. And they, and they came every year. And so at one point, they had to go down to Greenbridge, put quarters in the machinery to play the different machines. So what I did, I built an extra room and I built an arcade for these kids. And they didn't have to play no more. They came every day. The parents would drop them off, although I never met the parents. But they would drop them off, and they'd come and play every day. And that's who I am, and this is what I do. And I'm going to continue to do it. I'm going to help the community continue to grow. And one more thing I want to say, I adopted Stonewall Tale as my school. And what I did, I brought my entire show, my entire band from Europe, California, Michigan, Austin, South Carolina, and Georgia, and we did a show there free. Twenty-five thousand dollar show. I did it out of my pocket. And I had the kids at Stonewall Tale be a part of it. And Ms. Echoes, I think she's here tonight. Will you stand please? Because she helped me with this. She got all the kids together. She got, she got all the kids together, and they performed along with, with me. And I just want to know what I do, what I have been doing, and I'm going to continue to do it. Thank you.
Well, you know, we have got real bond.
I've got something I want to present to you. Since I'm, since I'm from the original Motown, I want to share something with you. This is all black stuff, and the best in the world. I'm going to present this to the city council, to the mayor, city council, upstate. This is everybody who's ever played at Motown up until two thousand, all men, all women, this is called Men, the Men of Motown, and everybody who's ever worked at Motown is here. I have, Spalding, you see Marvin did, everybody did. I want you all to have that, okay? Thank you.
I want to thank my fraternity brother here, Hamilton Bohannon. And some of you may not be as old as I am, you don't know who Hamilton Bohannon is. But I danced to a few Hamilton Bohannon records. But the important thing, not his fame, not his fortune, he talked about what he's done for the community. And those are some bold statements that he made. How many of you would turn your backyard into bars? Or put an arcade in a, in a spare bedroom and not charge the kids? My brother, thank you so much. I don't know what you've done musically or what you've done for this community. Thank you. My favorite song was Here Comes Bohannon, so he was reminding me of that.
Can you guys go first on three, one, two, three? One, two, three.
All right, I'll go. Here we go. One, two, oh wait, here we go. One, two, three. One more time, one, two, three.
Right here, here we go. One, two, and three. One, two, and three. Gotcha.
The next proclamation is a proclamation recognizing Tori Tomlinson and Old National Crime Prevention Day, and this is sponsored by Councilmember Khalid.
Mr. Tomlinson, would you come on up? Oh, yes. And our wonderful police department.
After the little girl had been missing overnight, she was located here, Office Elementary School, where a vigilant teacher saw the Facebook post, notified the front office, who returned, called police, and not long after that, she was reunited with her family.
It was really unbelievable how many people reached out and was trying to find her.
On a day when Tori Tomlinson would have normally been at work, he was scheduled off and happened to see a missing persons report about four-year-old Aubrey O'Curry. The father of four felt her mother's pain, not knowing where her little girl was, so he decided to post about it on Facebook.
Hey, we're going to find this girl. I don't know why, but I felt like we was going to find this girl.
And the community was eager to help.
A lot of people were very passionate about it, and, you know, they shared it three hundred plus times.
Tomlinson says the next morning, a teacher at Church Street Elementary saw his post and recognized Moses Allen as someone who has come to the school before. That teacher alerted the front office. They called police, but before the teacher could even get back to his classroom, he saw Allen in the office attempting to pick up Aubrey O'Curry's sister.
Say, had it not been for your post, I wouldn't have known, and maybe this guy would have left and got away again.
Aubrey O'Curry was reunited with her mother not long after. Tomlinson returns to Facebook to thank his followers and celebrate.
I promise God, I just really felt like we were going to find this girl. And man, we really found her. We all did, and we found this little girl. I am really happy.
Now, Moses Allen was arrested, but that was for previous warrants. He has not been charged in this case, but officials tell us charges are possible. We'll let you know if that happens. And we're with Dale, I'm Natasha Givens, 11 Life News.
So there were many, many people, first of all, this is just a night, I think that we're just celebrating the people in our community, so I love that. But there were many people who participated in finding the little girl that was missing from the Walmart Old National. But it was the result of one post that led to the tip that found her. And I think that that is so important because I know for myself, many times, I think lots of people are reposting this, I don't need to repost it another time. But you might be the one person that leads to the discovery of a missing child. So I just want to thank Tori Tomlinson, not only for that, but he does so, so many things. We don't have enough time and enough proclamations to go through all of them, so I'm just going to read a little bit of this briefly. Whereas Tori Tomlinson, the son of Old National in the city of South Fulton, who has along with his organization, Old National Entertainment, successfully organized community events and celebrations for over a decade, after working a full day, heard about a four-year-old girl gone missing from Walmart, and as a result of one of the, of his posts, one of the followers on his page contacted him with the tip, which led to the arrest of the man who disappeared with the four-year-old girl. Now, therefore, be resolved that the mayor and council join in celebrating Wednesday, October tenth, 2018, as Tori Tomlinson and Old National Safety Crime Prevention Day.
Thank you. I would like to say, I would like to thank God for using me as a vessel to, um, send me home from work that day, to see that on the news. And I have daughters as well, so it really touched me, a four-year-old girl missing in my community. So I felt like it was my civic duty to do something. I had to share this honor with the guy on the staff for his awareness, for seeing the post and paying attention to it, not just scrolling by. So he called me, he hit me on my inbox and said, "Hey, hey," and he let me know what was going on. And he said, "Without your post, I would not have been able to do this." I would just like to say that the power of social media is real. So when you see those posts and people ask you to share, you just could be saving someone's life, just like we did in this order. We're in a world today where we find out news on social media before we do on the regular television. And that's the same thing that happened in this case. He was at work, he wasn't able to watch the evening news, the twelve o'clock news like I was, but he was able to look on his phone and scroll down. And there, that's why I'm saying that now, it's power in social media. Next, I would like to say all heroes don't only wear capes and badges, they're angels in disguise, and they look just like you and I. And I would like to thank Councilmember Khalid for acknowledging me, the mayor, and I'm glad that I was able to help these detectives make their job a little easier, and we got this little girl back home safe. I would like to thank you.
One last thing before we say our prayers. We do want to acknowledge our South Fulton Police Department and your coordination with Clayton County, Clayton County Schools, and all of the law enforcement agencies that work to follow on the tips. So when you all send in tips, we do respond. Mom.
Can't see Baker.
You want to go first?
Yeah, I can't see Baker.
Okay.
There we go. No, no, stand back up, stand up, stand up, stand up. Keep moving. There we, there we go. Now we can see everybody. Here we go. On three. Right here, one, two, three. One more time, one, two, three.
Right here. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you. One, two, three.
All right, we're good.
The next proclamation is sponsored by Councilmember Dunn, a proclamation recognizing Georgia Public Safety Appreciation Week.
All right. Hello. So as we just heard about saving a little girl's life, we also want to make sure that we recognize our officers here in the city of South Fulton. October the third through the ninth is Georgia Public Safety Awareness Week. And we want to make sure that we are actually working with our officers as a community. So I wanted to give you all a proclamation, I think it's back here.
Can somebody say a proclamation?
So we have our deputy police chief in the access of our chief of police medal and her team here. So I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas the vitality of our city, county, and state depends on how safe we keep our homes, neighborhoods, schools, workplaces, and communities. Whereas crime and the fear of crime destroys our trust in others and in civic institutions, threatening the community's health, prosperity, and quality of life. Whereas people of all ages must be aware of what they can do to prevent themselves and their families, neighbors, and coworkers from being harmed by crime. People of all ages must be aware of the dangers of crime and how they can protect themselves from becoming victims. Crime prevention initiatives must include self-protection and security, but they must go further to promote collaborative efforts to make neighborhoods safer for all ages and to develop positive opportunities for young people. Adults must invest time, resources, and policy support to effective prevention and intervention strategies for youth. And adults must make sure to engage teens and programs to drive crime from their communities. And whereas effective crime prevention succeeds because of partnerships with law enforcement, other government agencies, civic groups, schools, faith-based communities, businesses, and individuals, and they also help to nurture communal responsibility and instill pride. So now, therefore be resolved, the mayor and council do here proclaim October 2018 as Crime Prevention Month in the week of October third through the ninth, 2018, as Georgia Public Safety Appreciation Week in the city of South Fulton. Thank you for all that you do. I know us a lot, and we're growing. We're not a baby anymore, but we are growing, and we do appreciate you all. And we do appreciate the community, and we appreciate our officers as well. So this is for you. Come out to all of the events. I know a lot of my colleagues are hosting coffees with the cop. Get to know your officers. That's what community policing is all about.
Here we go. Right here. Here we go.
Get them right, get them right.
Here we go. Right here. One, two, three. One more time. One, two, three.
Right here. One, two, three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Gotcha. Thank you.
The next proclamation is sponsored by Mayor Edwards, a proclamation for Fire Prevention Week.
Every time I give a proclamation, they turn the mic off. But I'm glad to do this for our fire department. And one, one time, Chief Strong, the fire department, asked up a community, said, "I really want to go out of business, but y'all won't let me." And they asked him, "Well, Chief, what are you talking about?" He said, "'Cause y'all continue to put three hundred bulbs on your Christmas tree. You leave fire, you leave the grease on the stove. I can't go out of business." So we don't, we can't send them out of business, we really don't. They do more than just put out fires. Y'all understand, they're first responders when it comes to medical emergencies and families that need you. And they do a heck of a job. We have an outstanding fire department. Let's give them a long welcome. So I walked, and I walked in, I was thinking, "You got a bunch of smoke detectors and batteries." "Mr. Dunn, what'd they call..." But it was Grant. It was a grant, I slept there today. But then y'all need smoke detectors, you better see them before you leave the day, and fire extinguishers. Let me read this proclamation. Whereas the city of South Fulton is committed to ensuring the safety and security of the public.
Thank you guys so much. And before I give it to Chief, we all need to take advantage of what the fire department actually do. You know, they'll come out to your house, and they'll walk their house with you, making sure that you have everything in line. All you got to do is to give them a call. This man here goes out and makes sure that the business that you go into, eating, buying, that they're, we should, they're safe. He's our fire marshal, along with Jack Butler, with Jack, with Jack, every Jack Butler. So we do a lot of stuff, just take, please take advantage of what you, of what the fire department does, okay? Chief.
Well, Mayor, I want to thank the mayor and council for this proclamation tonight. And you know what, I want to just tell you just a little story here. We commemorate and memorialize Fire Prevention Week. We celebrate the whole month, but it's about the great Chicago fire. That fire killed over three hundred people, three point three square miles was destroyed in Chicago. But you know what? On October eighth, eighteen seventy-one, that was a much larger fire, and you don't even know about it. And it killed over fifteen hundred people, and it occurred in Vestigo, Wisconsin. Destroyed the whole town. Well, why do we do Chicago? Why are we always talking about Chicago, where it fired? It was the hub, the metropolis. Well, gathered here today with me are the brave. And these, boy, they look so young. These are the brave that deliver that service to you. Usually when the brave come together, it is to honor our dead or memorialize our dead. But they have come here tonight, and we're so happy that this is a memorable occasion. Now, I just want to say, part of my new staff, Rachel, we walk. We're just happy to be able to bring her aboard, we got some, she's got some great things planned for us and for you as we deliver the service to you. Thank you, it's been my honor to serve you as your fire chief. Thank you.
Well, while we are talking about fire prevention, I also want to salute our fire department because you're outstanding first responders. Unfortunately, I had to use you for an incident at my home following my dad's stroke, and you all did an amazing job. I got to see you firsthand when we had a fire in Madison Trace, and today I saw you do education to our young people at Randolph Elementary. You are amazing, we so appreciate you and continue to do the great work that you do. Thank you.
There's one thing that he forgot to mention. Where I live, there was a lot of construction going on, and there were people complaining about weird smells and gases. They also do monoxide testing as well. And so I got to see you all firsthand, show up to my house in my community and test outside of my house for monoxide, and also the inside of my house for monoxide. And so they do that as well. So I commend you and thank you.
All right. Here we go, right here on three. One, two, three. One more time, one, two, three. All right.
All right, here we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
The next proclamation is sponsored by Councilmember Dunn, a proclamation recognizing Adrian Perry Appreciation Day.
Well, the family of Adrian Perry and Mr. Perry himself, come on and join us. Give this fellow a round of applause. Our Westlake High School senior came up to the front. He looks like he ready for business, huh? Come on, congratulations. All right, so here's your proclamation, I'm gonna read it. Whereas the city of South Fulton, Adrian Perry's motto is, "Why just dream it when you can do it." Whereas the seventeen-year-old Westlake High School senior has demonstrated outstanding leadership in the A.W. Tony Matthews Boys and Girls Club in his community and through his academic achievement in school, has earned him the title of Matthews Club Youth of the Year. Whereas the positive leadership that Adrian displays, being the voice of more young people like him, he wants to use his voice to encourage other youth to conquer their challenges and achieve their dreams and bring awareness to issues such as teen suicide and bullying. Whereas Adrian believes real leaders pay it forward, which is what motivates his passion for giving back to the community. Whereas Adrian is a charismatic leader with a bright future, and he plans to study business and sociology with the dreams of owning his own counseling center for teens that focuses on job training and the arts. And he's come right back to South Fulton, okay? All right. And whereas the city of South Fulton is proud of Adrian and recognizes his outstanding accomplishments and his ambitions to be the Youth of the Year for the Boys and Girls Club of Metro Atlanta. Now, therefore be resolved, the mayor and council recognizes this day, Tuesday, October the ninth, 2018, as Adrian Perry Appreciation Day in the city of South Fulton. I'm gonna let him say a few words.
You just gotta get loud. All right, she said my name, but thank you, thank you all. My name's Adrian Perry, I'm seventeen years old. I reside in the city of South Fulton. I'm a senior at Westlake High School, and I'm currently running for Youth of the Year, which is sponsored by the Boys and Girls Club. After high school, I planned on attending college and majoring... Not HBCU. And I plan on also majoring in, it was business, but now it's media and film production, and minoring in either marketing or sociology. And while volunteering to, you know, help mentor younger, younger kids, which I believe that we all can strive to be better in all kinds of ways, it doesn't matter what our obstacles are. So, yeah, thank you again.
All right, here we go, right here. All right, here we go. One, two, three. One more time, one, two, three. Okay.
Mr. Adrian, you follow your dreams and keep your faith, and you will go a long ways. I'd be praying for you if you pray for me.
One, two, three. One, two, three, one more. Hold on. One, two, and three. Got it.
The last proclamation is sponsored by Mayor Protim Baker, a proclamation for Pure Balance Chiropractic and Dr. Nikki McHenry Day.
Yes. Last, last but not least, Doc, can you come on up? If Doc comes up, we had on the consent agenda a proclamation that was issued to Pointe Ridge subdivision. Y'all stand up real quick so everybody can see how great you look. This Saturday, they represented, we're a lot of joy, their first fall festival in Pointe Ridge, and their commitment to turning that neighborhood around is amazing, so we appreciate you. All right. Well, located in the, in the heart of District Seven is this fantastic business, this fantastic, amazing doctor. Right next to the fifty-yard line, and where the Royale was, is a gym right in the heart of our district, and I just want to acknowledge Dr. McHenry. Whereas Pure Balance Chiropractic has served patients in the city of South Fulton for nearly ten years, where they offer chiropractic adjustments, therapeutic modalities, massage therapy, as well as on-site X-ray diagnostics, oxygen-infused skincare treatments, and home care products to promote healthy skin. Pure Balance Chiropractic also offers food sensitivity testing, as well as a line of natural supplements to support digestive health. Whereas Dr. Nikki McHenry, board certified by the National Board of Chiropractic Examiners and licensed in physiotherapy, is the founder of Pure Balance Chiropractic. Whereas Dr. McHenry received a Doctor of Chiropractic from Parker University in Dallas, Texas, and has been practicing for thirteen years. Whereas Dr. McHenry is an active member of the National Association of University Women And whereas Dr. McHenry co-authored a peer-reviewed article in the Annals of Vertebral Subluxation Research Journal. Dr. McHenry is also recognized as one of Atlanta Magazine's 2018 Top Chiropractors. Now therefore be resolved, that the mayor and city council of the city of South Fulton do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October ninth, 2018, as Pure Balance Chiropractic Appreciation Day in the city of South Fulton, Georgia.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Edwards and councilmembers. Thank you. I thank you, and I thank Councilmember Mark Baker, who represents the district where my business is located, for his extending this invitation to me this evening. I truly appreciate tonight's recognition, as it relates to my practice, but more importantly, as a small business owner in the new and thriving city of South Fulton. Thank you.
All right, here we go.
All right, here we go. Stop on three.
Here we go. One, two, three. One more time, one, two, three.
You good? You good? Here we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, and three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you have received fifteen speaker cards. First, four speakers will please approach the podium at this time, Mr. Mike Taylor, Ms. Lynette Camara, Mr. Jeffrey Fano, and Ms. Joyce Armstrong.
Thank you, mayor and council, for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Mike Taylor, I reside in District Four in the City Road Community Area. I am extremely happy tonight because our truck ordinance has regained its dignity, and I thank you for your diligence. Now, with that being said, probably don't hear the warehouse going up over in the corner of ninety-two, Route Ninety-two, South Fulton. Now, that's going to generate awful lot of truck traffic, heavy truck traffic. So when that happens, those drivers will probably find their way back onto our road. So I propose that we maximize those violators, whether it's out of ignorance or blatant disregard of our ordinance, and that we, you can, sort of give up the, the guidance on what you need from the citizens to capture this information and who to give it to. Now, I've heard that we need to capture the, the, the numbers or callers on the cash as opposed to the trailer, but keep us, because we're ready to capture this. And we're not standing to cover any traps or anything, but we want to maximize, because it's on the corner, it's on the border of our district border, the city of South Fulton, but we know we reside in that dirty word Union City. So we want to maximize on this here violators, so if they're going to drive in our backyard, then we want them to pay. So thank you for your diligence, and I do think that that was really smooth, councilmen, we appreciate that, all you did, thank you very much.
So if the other speakers are here, Ms. Camaro, Mr. Camaro, Ms. Armstrong, would you please stand in the center aisle so we know you're present?
Good evening. My name is Lynette Camar. I'm the Homeowner Association President for Pointe Ridge Community, District Seven. I am here to, tonight, to, along with my board, to thank, to give some special people thanks for our fall, for making our fall festival for October sixth successful. And the reason for our event was to bring our community together. We're now trying to bring positive things to our community. And those peoples are Captain Cotton Toot, Dolores Bassman, she's still there for our mayor, Roger Bruce, State Representative sixty-one, the chief of the Fire Department, along with Jack Butler. They stopped, they stopped dropping roll when we called them to help us. And also, we had Officer P. Smith out there to help us. And most of all, our city councilman, Mayor Protim, Proteam, Mark Baker, and his assistant, Yusef Altway. They did more than just come and assist. They, Mark provided these beautiful shirts that you all see us have on. Boy, we all stand up again and turn around, we just wanted to let everybody know that I, that I city council...
You're good. You're good. Here we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, and three. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, you have received fifteen speaker cards. First, four speakers would please approach the podium at this time. Mr. Mike Taylor, Ms. Lynette Camara, Mr. Jeffrey Fano, and Ms. Joyce Armstrong.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Mike Taylor. I reside in District Four in the City of Royal Community Area. I am extremely happy tonight because our truck ordinance has regained its dignity. And I thank you for your diligence. Now with that being said, probably don't hear the warehouse going up over in the corner of Ninety-two, Route Ninety-two, South Fulton. Now that's going to generate awful lot of truck traffic, heavy truck traffic. So when that happens, those drivers will probably find their way back onto our road. So I propose that we maximize those violators, whether it's out of ignorance or blatant disregard of our ordinance, and that we, you can sort of give up the, uh, the guidance on what you need from the citizens to capture this information and who to give it to. Now I've heard that we need to capture the, uh, the, uh, the numbers or callers on the cash as opposed to the trailer, but keep us, because we're ready to capture this. And we're not setting up any traps or anything, but we want to maximize, because it's on the corner, it's on the border of our district border, the City of South Fulton. But we know we reside in that dirty word Union City. So we want to maximize on this here violators, so if they're going to drive in our backyard, then we want them to pay. So thank you for your diligence and how you did that. That was really smooth, council members. We appreciate that. All you did, thank you very much.
So if the other speakers are here, Ms. Camaro, Mr. Fano, Ms. Armstrong, would you please stand in the center aisle so we know you're present?
Good evening. My name is Lynette Camaro. I'm the Homeowner Association President for Point Ridge Community, District Seven. I am here to, tonight, to, uh, along with my board, to thank, to give some special people thanks for our fall, to making our fall festival for October sixth successful. And the reason for our event was to bring our community together. We're now trying to bring positive things to our community. And those peoples are Captain Cotton Toot, Dolores Baskin, she's still there for our mayor, Roger Bruce, State Representative sixty-one, the Chief, uh, Few Fire Department, along with Jack Butler. They stopped, they stopped dropping road when we called them to help us. And also, we had Officer P. Smith out there to help us. And most of all, our City Councilman, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, Pro Tem, uh, Mark Baker, and his assistant, Eusef Altway. They did more than just come and assist. They, uh, Mark provided these beautiful shirts that you all see us have on. Boy, we all stand up again and turn around. We just wanted to let everybody know that I, that our City Councilman brought us this shirt and we said, "Fall Festival", and we were so proud of that. And not only did he bring the shirts, he came there and he spent time with us and he made us feel important and he provided officer for us for our safety. And we really appreciate that and we wanted you to know how much we appreciate you. And everyone and then all the city officials who take time out to make sure that our community is thought of. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor and Councilman. Reverend Jeff Goodman, President of State Community Chapter, South Fulton National Action Network, and resident of City of Royal, District Four, Councilman Gabe Gilmore is my councilperson. While you're getting enough in a plethora of accolades that you deserve, I support those accolades, but I also have an issue that is very near to my heart and quite sure it will strike you as the same. As I went down to pay my property taxes, I took it to the tax assessor as to why aren't my taxes being spent here in South Fulton? As a resident of South Fulton, I've been here now just about two years, but I'm quite sure of South Fulton's been longer than I've been here. And that being said, Highway Ninety-two coming off, I'm sorry, South Fulton Parkway coming off of eighty-five to eighty-five, all the way down to Villa River, has not one street light. But in my time being here in eighteen months, I've seen four fatal accidents. Four. And we're talking about giving the accolades to our first responders. Absolutely, they deserve it. Why? Because they are the ones there when the little man, the young man died here on Highway Ninety-two and then a very close friend of mine, her son, who was also a firefighter, died right here on Highway Ninety-two. And we have not done anything about street lights. And each issue, they have cited that it was bad lighting where they made it short-term, whereas light would have given them more clarity that they would have made the right turn or a right turn, however you want to say it. Even up here off of Roosevelt Highway and, um, Highway Ninety-two. What am I saying? That our City Council, now that we are a city and we're not just South Fulton, with the Board of Commissioners in Atlanta, uh, talking about South Fulton, we never live in or coming to South Fulton, we have a council now. And I know that this probably is not in your lane, but I want to agree to you because as we begin to push it, I want you to know, but however to begin behind the fact that we need lights out there. Are we going to wait for another fatality and then make another passionate plea of how bad we feel when in fact we can do something about it? And if they're not going to put these lights out there, then we don't need to be paying taxes for services we're not getting. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Forward, Ms. Joyce Armstrong, Mr. Avon Spence, Mr. Rick Jarvis, and L.O.Y. Barrett. Ms. Armstrong.
Good afternoon. My name is Joyce Armstrong and I'm District Six. I'm President of Heritage Park and President of Old Naru, which is Old National Area Residents United. First, I would like to thank Mayor Edwards, Councilwoman Kellie, and Ms. Baskins for all of your support. On October the twentieth, from eight o'clock to one P.M., Old Naru will have their second cleanup for this year. At the last cleanup, we picked up over seven hundred pounds of trash of, of Old National, which also included trash from the communities on the corridor. I am inviting the entire City Council, along with all communities on the Old National Corridor, to join in to help us clean up. In preparation for our cleanup, we have always been able to count on public works, code enforcements, bricks and parks, along with Chief Sound and Beautiful. Thank you Chief Meadows for hiring eighteen new police officers and allowing Captain Cotton Toots to help Heritage Park and Old Naru. Also, thanks Deputy Chief Connie Rogers for supporting Old Naru. I would like to thank our outstanding city manager, Mr. Donald Ode for being our guest speaker at our last Old Naru meeting. He provided a wealth of information. I have always learned from a very little girl that when you learn to say thank you, you open up the door, receive all the help that you could need. So if we work together, we can accomplish any and everything in our great city. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Avon Spence and, uh, I'm in District Four. You know, you know, I wonder when people come to this podium, if we've really heard you. I, I, I wonder that. And, and the reason why I wonder that is that when, I'm, I'm here representing the trash. I'm a small business owner. I own the smallest of all sanitation businesses in South Fulton. And the reason why I wonder that is because when the original RFP came out and it had this clause in there about ninety-two thousand new cans. And I was wondering, why would people need new cans if they already got cans? If somebody has a can that's not clean, it's the day that, because I've never delivered a can that was unsanitized. And I gotta watch the clock. If I don't finish the day, I'll be back at the next meeting. But what happened is this, right? Originally, they gave me six points out of a hundred and thirty. And the other trash companies said they couldn't use us, so everything would have been out of business. And then they put a thing in there that needed these expensive trucks. We can't afford it. Now as things stand right now, the newest resolution come out says you need five million dollars insurance. Five million dollars insurance puts me out of business. And as I understood that the, uh, the new proposal would be modeled after Sandy Springs. If it's modeled after Sandy Springs, and Sandy Springs have five hundred thousand dollars insurance, which is affordable, then why would y'all require five million dollars? That's ten times as much as anybody else. Here's the proposal. I hope this is a photograph for Earth.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm Lloyd Barrett. Uh, I live in District Five, Rosie Jackson's District. And I live, I'm the President of Cassandra Estates and Bureau Woods Homeowners Association. And I live at fifty-nine twenty-five Avenue of Redwood College Park. And, uh, we have a nice little subdivision over there and we've tried real hard. I've been over there in that subdivision for forty-two years. I moved there in nineteen seventy-six. And, I mean, nineteen ninety-six, excuse me, seventy-six. And, uh, anyway, it's been a long time. And we've had to fight hard to keep our values up down in there. But anyway, just recently, on Mall Road Road, we've had a commercial company come in there and took up a residential home that had run down, breached, and turned it into a car lot with car haulers and everything else. And Rosie has pictures of it. But we got in touch with code enforcement, code enforcement has run out of it. And this weekend, we got with Rosie and talked with Rosie and she checked with City Hall. And as far as we know, it is not zoned for commercial and they do not have a business license. So we are asking the City Council and Mayor, please vote for no more commercial stuff on Mall Road. We have enough problems as it is. We have commercial at the one, on each end of Mall Road and that's enough for all the residential areas in there. So we appreciate anything you can do to stop it from being a reason for that. And if we could, we'd like to get it shut down immediately. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Forward, Mr. Jarvis, Mr. Charles Bedford, Ms. Glenda Collins, and Ms. Louise Martin.
Mayor and Council, my name is Rick Jarvis. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm with Latham Home Sanitation. We've been in business since nineteen seventy-four in this community. Uh, I do not have enough time to tell you all the things we have done in the community and have Point Ridge here. Y'all have an empty day coming up October twentieth. Those empty days were started over thirty years ago by my company in Point Ridge Subdivision. And then spread to Melanie Manor, Morning Creek, I can go on and on, Pine Trees. All the subdivisions, we have serviced through those years. All the people we consider family, that are, that are customers of ours. But you're, when you went to the model of Sandy Springs, that's free enterprise, that's great. But what you put in there, your insurance requirements, which Fulton Weeks was talking about, Avon, there. The five million dollar policy is ten times more than what Sandy Springs required their haulers. Ten times more. What he gave you shows the difference. If you have those in place, come November one, you will have one company operating in South Fulton. And that's the biggest one. Because all the little guys, we can't, we can't, uh, afford those policies and be able to be competitive price-wise. We just got put out of the price range. As in doubling our prices. We can't do it. So I'm here, if you will consider going, if you're going to use the Sandy Springs model, then use Sandy Springs numbers that you, that they have in their ordinances. And I know there's a couple other small companies that are going to spend here. You have a half dozen illegal haulers running around in South Fulton. You have over twelve thousand houses that are unaccounted for with a, with a hauler. We, as small haulers, know your community better than anybody out here. We know what you eat, you eat out, you don't eat what car you drive, you know the kids, your kids know us. We know better than anybody. Your areas, we see the crime, we know where the crime's not. We know. So the small guns are important to your community. You need, you need to think about that. All right? Thank you.
My name is Chuck Luth. For about a long time resident of South Fulton. I've lived in the same house, in the same neighborhood for four or six years. I enjoy living here and I want to continue to live here. I would like to see more of this place on code enforcement. We have been at loggerheads with code enforcement for fifteen, eighteen years. Some of the same situations then as now. Uh, I want to second Mr. Barrett's suggestion about the business that was started up. I think we need to do like Marty advice says and nip it in the bud before we have more of this kind of essence. He said, "I wasn't going to mention this, but the gentleman from Latham Sanitation made me think of it. I would like for South Fulton to include a stipulation in whoever gets the new contract to place the empty containers back off the road into the yard." If you have an empty container on both sides of the street, it really constricts the floral property and it creates a hazard. We've got vacant houses in our neighborhood that need attention. And I know you guys combined with owners and the person to do things. We've got automobiles that shouldn't be parked where they're parked. We've got, we've got a semi tractor and trailer parked across the street from me in the driveway. I don't think that's very code. And it's been there for over a month. Now, if, if code enforcement is doing their job and circling around and checking on things, they, you can't miss a semi tractor. It stands out. And, and I'd like to see code enforcement have the authority to have vehicles actually towed from property. Right now, I understand we give them a ticket and it, and it just sits there. They go to court and they, they, uh, found them or whatever and it just still sits there. So I'd like for code enforcement to have more leeway in what they do and more authority to do what needs to be done. Is your neighborhood in?
Our neighborhood is, uh, Bureau Woods and Cassandra Estates.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, my name's Louise Martin. I'm in District Four. And my concern is, and I'm in Lexington Park, and our concern has to do with parking. And we keep getting what I consider a total runaround because of being told one thing and we're thinking the issue is settled, whereas we only have to post signs in order to say no parking. And then the police department, which, the police, because I'm also one of the captains of our, um, block captain. And so we've worked with them and they have told us on many occasions that all we need to do is post the signs that says no parking and they can come in and take it and so forth. We thought we'd gotten that straight. We, I even had an email from Council, Councilwoman Gilmore saying, "Everything's okay. You will get your signs." We even went so far as to say, "You know what? If the city doesn't want to pay for it, we'll pay for it ourselves." Now I hear from Mr. Clark that the council has to now put in an ordinance and a resolution in order to make that viable. And to me, it's just not making any sense. We're going back and forth, back and forth. And I'm a retired educator and I write a lot. And I, and I worked for the government for the last thirty years. So I know policies and procedures and I believe in policies and procedures. And I dig into it before I make a decision on what it is that we need to do. And I would just like for someone to get, give us the correct direction in which we need to go. And Mr. Clark is saying that the council and the mayor and so forth and you folks have to make a decision as to what those ordinance are. Okay? Because it's really a hazard in our community. Cars are parked. The streets, as you well know, with all of the new subdivisions are very tight. So when people just park anywhere and park on the street, it creates a hassle. A hassle in addition to, it's a sacred, uh, situation that also, uh, impedes our community. So I'd like for someone to finally give us a decision on what is going to happen and when. Okay? Thank you.
Forward, Ms. Glenda Collins, Mr. Mike Bradford, Mr. Tim Hornbuckle, Ms. Bart Brueg, Ms. Bradley, Ms. Collins.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would like to thank my, uh, councilwoman Rosie Jackson and all the other councilpeople that worked hard on the truck orders and went downtown together. So I take my hat off to you because I know it was a great effort. I would also like to thank the Department of Communication and External Affairs for their assistance with the monthly event calendar. There has been an increase in traffic on Highway Twenty-nine and Roosevelt Highway where you turn to go on Spur Fourteen. Now, I don't know if that's a city issue or D.O.T. issue, but it needs to be addressed because a traffic light or some type of mechanism is needed there in order to control the traffic. No one is addressing or educating the citizens of the city or educating the citizens on Fulton Industrial. That is a very important vote. So when will the citizens be notified regarding Fulton Industrial? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm with Reliable Sanitation and we have serviced Sandy Springs, South Fulton, and Cotton County for thirty years. Fourteen years we've been here. So the last sixteen months, our jobs in South Fulton have been a memento, waiting to see what you decided to do. So you decided to go with the city of Sandy Springs model, but yet your insurance requirements are ten times whatever parts are. You're five million dollars. If you pass this in those limits, you will be limited to one company and that will be a waste of insurance. You're limited to five now. You only have five companies, four which are independents. We're all here tonight to ask you to rethink these limits. If you pass these limits, I'll stay in business, but I'll have to pass this along to your constituents. Also, we're already having to pass along a five percent infrastructure fee that you, that you put in place. The city of Sandy Springs is five percent. That's reasonable. But to pass on these high limits of insurance along with five percent, these rates will now, your average rate in South Fulton is probably fifteen dollars. You're going to see the rate go to twenty-one dollars, even higher, to, for us to be able to afford these high limits of insurance. So I ask that you rethink this and this, this way you'll at least keep us independents, in business, in South Fulton. If this goes through like this, you'll see all of your independence gone. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Tim Hornbuckle. I'm with Community Waste Disposal. I'm the owner and the operator. It's just me and another guy. Been servicing South Fulton for fifteen years, and have a great relationship with my customers. It's just like these guys said, if you guys let this pass, these insurance requirements, I'm done. I mean, I have six hundred stops in the city of South Fulton, and that's it. So, you do the math, the insurance guy quoted me today, fourteen thousand, five hundred dollar increase, one year, that, I mean, I can pass it along to the customers, but it's gonna make it so high that they'll just shop around, and eventually, like they said, build a big company. So, I would just like you all to reconsider the insurance portion of it. Everything else is great. I believe you're all looking out for small businesses, but just please reconsider that. Thank you.
The last three speakers are Ms. Barbara Bradley, M. Erline Vane, and Mr. Rudolph Jones.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilpeople. My name is Barbara Bradley. I'm with the city of South Fulton. I have been living in Muir Woods homeowners. I'm also Vice President of Homeowners Association of Muir Woods. I'm here in reference to a new business on Mallory Road that has no license, and in reference to the big car home that's there, it's gonna create a lot of traffic. Also, I want to talk about the street, Mallory Road and Flatshells Road. On that corner, there's always a lot of trash, from the weekend to Wednesday or Thursday. It gets cleaned up, and then the next weekend is the same thing again. I would like to know if there's anything that can be done. Rosa Jackson, our councilwoman, also knows about that she has had that straightened out one time, and I would like to ask you also, again, see if you can something about that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Erline Vane, and I live on Avenue of Redwood, that Chandler Estates Muir Woods Homeowners Association. I did not know that my neighbor was going to speak the same, but I'm truly concerned about the trash that is thrown on Mallory Road going onto Flatshells. We do appreciate the fact that someone's coming out cleaning. The city's always out there cleaning it. But my question is, can we get maybe a camera? Because there is a sign saying no littering, but evidently, you know, we're not enforcing it. Saying it's filthy, it's filthy, it's filthy, and we shouldn't have to live like that. So, I'm just asking if there's anything we can do, would you please? Thank you.
The last speaker was Mr. Rudolph Jones. No further questions. Thank you. First item for business on page three of today's agenda is an ordinance. For second reading, sponsored by Councilmember Ral, ordinance two thousand eighteen dash zero forty, an ordinance to establish telecommunications standards and for other lawful purposes.
This particular ordinance is a second read.
Councilman Harrow.
This item, if we can defer, this is actually one we could be mighty commissioned, and we defer to their comments come back. The telecommunications one, they, the staff reviews, not the land. I follow that. Thank you.
The next item for second reading is co-sponsored by Councilmembers Duns, Willis, and Mayor Forten Baker, under ordinance two thousand eighteen dash zero forty-one, an ordinance to amend Title Six Health and Sanitation of the City Code to establish procedures for the collection, disposal, and recycling of solid waste and for other lawful purposes.
I guess city manager. I'm a little bit concerned about the insurance that they were referencing earlier. Can you tell me why? Because to transport a human body, you only need one million, three million. So, to transport trash, you need how much?
Well, I think our risk manager made a strong recommendation. He prepared to kind of speak to those, as he comes up to the mic. I think for us, our city is in a different fiscal position than some of the cities that were mentioned, and so, the recommendation is for what's in the best interest of the city, more so the comparisons to what is in other cities. And with that, I defer to Mr. Taylor to explain.
No, but I guess what I'm saying, I hear what he's saying with other cities. But I guess my question, and I haven't had an opportunity to look, to transport a human body, you only need one million, three million. I did transportation for over twenty-three years. So, tell me why you have to have five million? Is that why?
Yes.
To transport trash?
Yes. I mean, there are a lot of trucks on the street, there's a lot of additional liability. And the main thing that Mr. Donald pointed out is we're a new city. We have to make sure that we are protected to stay in business moving forward. A few lawsuits can really put us in a bad position. And this didn't come out of anywhere. This was talking to GMA in Burma, and talking to them and making sure that, to see what their opinion was, they give a lot of cities and counties. So, this was something, they actually took it a little bit higher, but I took on the lower end of the five million.
Okay. I guess what I'm saying is, I would be, I wanna take a look at this a little more, I'm sorry, because that sounds strange to me. And to me, it's superior to me. Now, it's just to me, that we're going for that one person here, and I'm not going down that road.
And so, I don't think that that's the direction that we're going through at all. I think what we look at is a variety of different providers who can provide the services at the five million dollars, including all of those who bid in on the service, each one of them could. I think for us, we're making a recommendation to the city, which council can approve or deny, but we're making a recommendation that is in the best fiscal interest of the city. So, after looking at the ordinance, looking at the liability of the city, and looking at what we will be responsible for, and if we could sustain lawsuits which we know are coming, can the city sustain those without, with less than a five million dollar insurance policy? And our subject matter expert in looking and confirming with other subject matter experts around the state does not believe so. The recommendations, I believe, were what, over ten million dollars in insurance policies that they recommended? To ensure that small businesses or multiple businesses would be able to participate. Mr. Brandon Taylor, after reviewing what they offered, said that he felt more comfortable with the five million dollar insurance limit. And I think council can, of course, adjust it or make changes as they see fit, but I think he was making his best subject matter expert recommendation.
I think that the state has more rigorous policies than a city. And I do know that one million, three million for a human body is what their requirement is. But I'm gonna let you all talk about this.
What I would like to say is that your recommendation came from Georgia Municipal Association, which is a neutral party organization that we are, who advocate on behalf of five hundred and sixty-seven cities. And if you have done your research as our risk manager, I think that we should listen to staff recommendations, because when we don't listen to the staff recommendations, it sends us down the wrong path. We are not the subject matter expert. And for me, I fought too hard for the city to allow two or three lawsuits to wipe us out. So, if staff is recommending, this is what needs to be done to protect this city that a lot of us fought hard for, then we need to listen to staff recommendations. And I have a few questions if you don't mind, Mr. City Manager, just a minute. City of South Fulton currently has five haulers providing service. Will all the haulers be listed as approved haulers, the current ones?
So, Councilwoman Willis, the way this ordinance is set up, any hauler in the city will have opportunity to become an approved company under this ordinance. And the requirements are, I think I have them enumerated on, okay, they're enumerated on page one ninety-six of your agenda packet. And these requirements include, the company has to one sign a contract in the form that is included on this ordinance, and that's the standard template. They also have to provide the city with a customer service telephone number to where complaints can be vetted, and citizens can contact the company. They have to give an authorized statement to the city stating that all their drivers are CBL certified. They have to give a copy of their solid waste handling permit with the EPD. They have to give a insurance certificate just outlining that they comply insurance-wise with whatever requirements that you establish. And then the staff would vet the documents that were submitted, and if they meet all the minimum requirements, they would then be authorized to serve.
Okay. And is the franchise fee five percent? Is that what we, we have decided what that fee will be?
Well, it's not a franchise fee, it's an infrastructure improvement fee for the burden that these trucks are gonna put on the city, and in consideration of providing this service for the city, and it is five percent.
Okay. And will we still have weekly pickup such as recycling yard waste services?
Yes. So, there is a requirement that all service units, residential service units, as well as commercial businesses, if there's a requirement here, they contract with someone who is an approved company under this ordinance. And then there's an exception where if you were having your waste hauled to a off-site or incident location, that you can provide evidence of that and still be compliant.
Okay. And will each of all be required to publish service rate and approval form for instance, annual CPI?
Not surface weight. I'm not necessarily sure, I need to look back. I don't think we require that they give us the rate information. I do know that there are CPI and other tonnage and other EPD reporting requirements that they have to give to make sure that they're state compliant, but the rate is exclusively up to the service provider and the resident to establish what rate the resident will accept.
Okay. Lastly, assistant city manager or the attorney, if we don't move forward on getting this sanitation ordinance approved, I mean, we hear a lot of people complaining about the dumping in our community, but what I'm worried about also is us being in violation of not, of receiving all of our sales tax. And so, I know the last time, we talked about this, we talked about being in tight, being in a tight window, and being in jeopardy of risking that if we don't move forward with standard of our sanitation. And I know, you said that they're about November thirtieth. Well, you guys were saying we are in November now, and it's gonna take time to get communication out to employees, I mean, to residents, it's gonna take time to educate residents on this. So, if this, this has to go through two reads, correct? Well, this is.
That's correct, and this is the second read.
This is the second read. If this is delayed two more weeks, what jeopardy is that gonna put us in?
Well, right now, the time schedule for compliance under this ordinance is that service vendors would have until November first to get all the necessary documentation in place to establish, to put in their request to become a city authorized vendor. And then at that point, they would have to pay the five percent fee starting November first on a quarterly basis. So, if you do move it back, then you're going to, you're gonna have a crunch, pretty much, where you're requiring within a very, very short timeframe that the vendors get this information, get the materials, and then actually start to sort this out in contracts and have that done before transition. One of the alternatives, the council has concerns about the insurance requirements, an alternative is to, for purposes of today, to mirror Sandy Springs' insurance requirements, but you authorize me to put in language that is subject to change.
Mr. Mayor, and I would like, I'm asking for your professional opinion to weigh in on this again. And we got two things we got to worry about. Number one, I don't want us at risk getting sued and not being protected. Number two, we have to have sanitation stood up as part of transition, and a lot of us have worked too hard to put our charter in jeopardy.
Ms. Jackson.
We often say that. Excuse me? Oh, I can't talk no more, these kids. When it's convenient, we say that we wanna follow staff's recommendations. Now, if it's not, we don't. I wanna hold this. Don't look at me like that, because I see, I'm a small business owner. So, my thing is this, I know what time it is when you're trying to put people out of business. And I'm not saying somebody's trying to put a person out, but I'm sitting here looking. And when I said I wanted to see the smaller businesses get a piece of this, I was serious. And I'm hoping our council, because this shoe could be on your foot at any day. So, I'm hoping our council will take a look at this. We need to sit down. I'm not saying that you didn't do your due diligence, but I think we need to go back and look again.
My goal is to protect the city.
And my goal is to protect the city as well. And the bottom line, I know the goal for the state is to protect the state and protect deal. And if they deal with one million, three million when you transporting a body, and I'm not talking a dead body, I'm talking a human body, I know good and well that something could be done as far as this insurance, I might be crazy. Something ain't right with this bitch. Something ain't right with this, I don't see this like this. And somebody need to show me something. I need to see what GMA said that it had to be ten million. I need to see, I wanna see those things, because I, there's something ain't right about that. But to me, we're coming down to what it started, we've gone to one provider, and I don't think that's what we said when we were saying we're going to Sandy Springs.
So, Brad, I, Taylor, sorry, Mr. Taylor. The reason why you said five million because protect the city from small cities that's possibly white stuff. Where is the, is there a lower end, or is that five million absolutely in protection? Is that what you're telling us?
We're a new city, you know, we're very early in, and, you know, we've got a lot of, a big population, a lot of area to cover, and if you things go the wrong way, we could really blow ourselves out of this situation. And my goal is to prevent that happen.
So, when we did the first time, was that a requirement, the five million was a requirement before when we did the RFP suggestion, was that one? Were that, when we were looking for sole buyers, was that part of the RFP that they needed to have?
So, I didn't see it until the second round. That's why I made a recommendation for the first time.
Okay. And city attorney, when you say we can model of Sandy Springs, we'll put language in to say something's to change, how does that really impact if we get lawsuits and things like that? I mean, I'm confused. You say we need five million, you're saying possibly you can just put the language in at Sandy Springs. Go ahead.
Well, Sandy Springs is considerably lower. Their average range from two hundred and fifty thousand, there might be a number that's a million in Sandy Springs, but for the most part, it's between two hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred thousand. I think that there is one that may be a million dollars. So, as far as, as far as your risk of exposure, I mean, it's, obviously, if you have five million to cover, then you're gonna get, you know, less risk of exposure, but. But if you're sued, you still have the immunity defenses that may be available to the city. And then you also have the fact that it depends on our contribution to whatever action occurred. Now, if we're not regulating this ordinance, we're lackadaisical with it, it's all over the place, people are doing whatever, we're not intuible citizen complaints, and then you have a repeat violator who ends up, you know, hitting the school bus, then we're a bit at a risk. So, I mean, there's risk in everything. You have that discretion. You can either do the five million, which gives you more assurance that if you are sued, you can have coverage to cover the judgment, or you can say, I'm going to go consistent with what has worked for this other city temporarily. It's your discretion.
And that's the confusing part for me, because Sandy Springs was a new city as well.
That's right.
So what, I mean, I know there's demographic difference, but I don't think there's definitely a difference from five million to what they took out. So I'm just thoroughly left at awe because I'm hearing we need five million in order to secure sanitation. And if we don't get it, then it's going to wipe the city out. And that's kind of, you know, it just doesn't, it's not genuine.
I want to add some context to that. I think the first piece is this is staff recommendation. It's not something that you have to take. But I think Mr. Taylor has believed that that is the best option. We're also very different situation in Sandy Springs. So yes, they were a new city, but they also had a ton of insulated cost. So their entire model was to contract out all of their services. And so they were built in on their expenses. And then their revenues, remember that we showed you guys last time, at the timeframe in which they received their revenue was also different. So their fiscal situation was just completely different than where the city had started off. And our service delivery models are completely different. And so this recommendation is not only based on, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. And I say, I think that what Mr. Taylor has done is made a recommendation based on where we are as a city, not so much where Sandy Springs was. I think we're in two different places. And I think that's how we would explain it. But again, it does not mean that you have to take that recommendation. That's just, you know, our risk manager's assessment of it. And he made a recommendation. And I think as staff, we believe that it is the best one.
So in order to move this, I only have twelve minutes. Oh, okay, so, um, so we move forward tonight with the language of Sandy Springs that is subject to change. And then we come back with the identified information that we're asking from G M A. Will that be able to move this process forward? We won't be able to get into the process. I just feel like we need more information as to, you know, why you came to this recommendation and if the five million is feasible as well. So...
And just to speak on that, you know, G M A's opinions means a lot to us. They're the ones, they're the ones who pan out our insurance money. So it's important for our partnership to be on the same page and for us to feel comfortable and for them to feel comfortable with a lot of bills that they were taking on.
What I'm asking for is probably the documentation to show that they came with all that recommendation as well to us. I mean, we just gave this verbal, we need probably visual to help us, you know, fully put off these things.
Right. Uh, Mr. Kellie?
You have to see the line. I just have to say, I, um... I'm a little sad, frustrated with this, with this conversation. We have been a city for sixteen months. We've been talking about this for like maybe six months. I think that Councilwoman Jackson is right. We are inconsistent with our application of sticking to council recommendations. Because the original, the original council recommendation was for advanced disposal. And we didn't stick to that. And then we had a, we were going to do this emergency procurement. And we haven't stuck to that. And now we're on our third iteration of an idea. And we're running out of time. And we're probably going to have to rush through and make this decision because we don't really, we don't really have a lot of time. I feel like there has been a lack on this issue and maybe some others. There's been a lack of leadership and there's been a lack of courage. One of my mentors taught me that the perfect is the enemy of the good. None of the systems that we have contemplated are perfect. But at some point, we just have to pick one and then make it as good as possible. I am concerned about this insurance business. But I'm actually a little bit more concerned that this doesn't really solve the problems. I think that when we were in strategic planning session, one of the things that we learned is that we need to focus on what is the good we are trying to achieve. And I think that what most of our residents wanted to achieve was a higher quality of service, less trucks on our streets, more accountability with our sanitation providers. I'm not sure this reduces the number of trucks or increases accountability because I'm not even sure how we're going to enforce this. Like, we haven't had this model long enough to understand how we're going to enforce it, how we're going to keep five or six or seven different trucks from being on the street. Um, and I just, I'm just a little disappointed by that. I would like, I would like to see us handle tough decisions a little bit better than if they were.
Thank you, Mr. Kellie. Rose?
Yes, well, I do have a question for you. Uh, when requesting or when receiving information from G M A, did you ask him anything regarding their conceptual framework of coming up with that, those numbers or that range?
Uh, no, we didn't go into breakdown. But they did confirm my thoughts on wanting a higher than if I look at the original contract. I believe it said two point five. And to me, that was concerning, that state grant. So my hunch mixed with what they provided is how I came to that number.
Did, what?
Oh, but I could, I could, you know, for sure go back and do further research and give you guys whatever, and make it whatever you need.
Are they normally willing to provide you with their essential, their methodology of coming up with, what they come up with?
Um, I think they just deal with, they deal with a lot of the cities and counties and areas, so they see a lot of these same situations come through. So, and they said it wasn't unreasonable, so.
But I guess, the reason why I'm asking is because we're very unusual as a city. You know, we're large in the metro of that area. We stretch our, we stretch all over the place, you know? And I think that it would be reasonable from your position to request how they come up with their number. And I guess my second question would be towards, I guess, legal or the city manager, possibly even the mayor, like, what is, what effect would this have on our rating as a city if we take on too much liability in the long run? Uh, where would we stand if we move this down so it would benefit more people when it comes to how our rating would be scored as a city?
Well, I mean, I think we have to get back with you on answer to that. But we did send you the G M A staff is now sent council. You can review it later, of course. But the methodology of how they came up with the five million dollars because they provided to Mr. Taylor and the staff is now, it'll be in your inbox and you check. But I think it's fairly thoroughly, you broke it down to the employee version, which is where the numbers end up dropping. So the information for you to consider is now in your inbox. And you'll be able to review it later. So that should take care of the methodology part. I think for the rating as a city, I think we just have to follow up with that. I think the concern always is when it comes to your debt and it comes to your liability, those are things that make you less stable as a city. So you always want to have lower debt and lower liability, which is why I think Mr. Taylor made his recommendation. I also think after taking a brief look at the G M A methodology and reasoning, I think when you see it, you'll kind of agree with them. Now, I think their numbers, just as Mr. Taylor does, was a little bit high on the five to ten million dollar range. I think the five million dollars is safe in our situation. Again, the council does not have to go with that. But one of the key points that I'm not sure Mr. Taylor mentioned that I did see in writing is that G M A is actually our provider. So they're going to have to pay this out. And so if they make a recommendation that we go again, I'll be certain that they would be able to ensure. And that, so those types of things, I think council also has to take into consideration as well. Because if our insurance provider is not going to cover us or pay out the coverage, then what do we do? And we take recommendation on that.
I guess, um, and I mean, it's no doubt to you, you being a sub-urban expert, it's just a lot that's been festering leading up to this decision as a city. So, you know, we have residents, we have business owners. We have everybody concerned and this is a large decision. And I'm sure you've done everything that you can. You're giving us best recommendation of your knowledge. I'm just curious if holding this would actually put us in any type of jeopardy going towards the November first that you, excuse me, going towards the November first date that you said that they have to give us some, they have to respond? Like, we will have how many meetings before we're past that?
Yeah, so I think that's the challenge.
Excuse me.
We have to go on to thinking.
I guess, what was directly, like, what would we have to do, a special meeting or something like that? Like, how would that affect, given that our timeline, the way it is established, we won't be meeting again before that date?
Right, and we would be remembering that for them to submit their items or information by November first, they basically have to give it tomorrow. Do you follow me? Like, or you're pushing it back further. So the next meeting, you still have to give us time to go through the process that's written out in the ordinance. You still have to go through that process and then give them time to be able to respond. Otherwise, they can't respond. So I think if the insurance dollar amount is, if the insurance dollar amount is the question, again, I think the staff has made a recommendation that you do not have to accept. If that is your sticking point, you can come up with what council finds amenable and direct our staff maybe to go back to G M A and see if they would still cover us. But again, anything above what their coverage is, the city is responsible for that.
Right, clear. Uh, but accepting this tonight and you moving forward, that with that gray area of starting this, uh, this process while at the same time waiting on those particulars to return to us, is that an option for us? But will we be locked in on it as a decision or to start this process? Is it possible to start the process and then we receive the information just so they can meet that November first deadline?
Well, yes, you can put, this is going to be X today, and then this is subject to change. So can you do that? You can. But I think you may also want to consider having a special meeting just to discuss this because one, it's going to be problematic on the vendors to have them go out and purchase insurance at the amounts that we temporarily set. And then having them, we do raise it to the five million amount, having them have to go back and redo the insurance. So, I mean, it creates a burden on vendors that we could potentially alleviate by a special meeting. But you do have the discretion tonight to say that we're going to pass, you know, under these terms and it is just subject to amendment.
Okay, we have to move on.
Well, first of all, we did, but we're going to go. Are you sure? Me, man?
I'm ready to just go on, ma'am.
Okay. Um, that is correct. We want to improve service. And so the fact that we are mandated, everybody to have trash, I think is going to improve service because we have several people in our city who not participated in trash services. And that's one of the reasons we have so much difficulty with nothing. Uh, to have less trucks on the street, I think we are going to have less trucks on the street because everybody, while everybody would have the opportunity to participate, everybody may not qualify because we do have criteria. And if they don't meet certain criteria, then they won't get approved to operate business in our city. For me, I want us to be as conservative as possible, starting off as a new city. And then we decided to go this route because it was going to be less stressful for our city to roll it out. But I also think we need to protect our city. Uh, we are new. There's still a lot of unknowns. There's still things we have to go through to transition. And I don't want us to be aggressive in rolling our trans, uh, sanitation services. So maybe after a year, if we could relax a little bit and we need to come back and reevaluate, that's fine. But I think we need to be as conservative as possible and careful as possible rolling out sanitation services. And Mayor, I would really love if you weighed in on this. Thank you.
After hearing the public comment from the small haulers and really trying to listen to also what our risk manager, I definitely see both sides. Um, I'd like to know when the original methodology came back from staff with a recommendation for two point five million, what was the thinking in that limit? And two, um, I guess I would like us to explore whether G M A would cover us at three point five million as a limit to kind of split the difference, you know? Trying to meet both halfway, maybe a little bit over halfway to see if one, we could still be covered.
Yeah, I can definitely look into that and speak with them and see what they're willing to budge. And just to, if I could respond to council and Baker's comment, it was really a deep pocket situation. And a situation where people are getting sued. We want the vendor to take, to be the deep pocket in the situation. We don't want to be perceived as the people hauling the money. We want, you know, they're the ones who are out there working. And we want to make sure that, you know, we kind of take a backseat on an excess basis instead of being the primary.
And I appreciate that and your work. I just wanted to see if we could get some more background information on the two point five million, which was the original number. Can anybody provide that information?
Can provide the information. So I think that came from Germa during that time. Germa G M A. I think at that time for the model that we were using, that was their recommendation.
Okay, so then they changed and then it went up?
Well, I don't think we asked any questions, to be honest with you. I think we just asked what our limit was at the time, and that's what they provided. And I think since that time, we've had some activity that has, remember, we told you in the new year, our rates would rise and things of that nature. We've got new services, so the cost of insurance increases, et cetera, et cetera. And so in the information that has been sent to you guys, you'll see that they say that you should match it at where you're covered at. So that, again, you're not the deep pocket. So if you're covered at five million, and I think we actually covered that more than that, but Mr. Taylor made a recommendation. But the request is, is that so that you're not the deep pocket, you match what the vendor would have to take on. So that's why his recommendation and theirs is the five million to the threshold of ten.
Um, I guess, I know the urgency of us making a decision, but I think it is important, particularly if they gave us the original recommendation that two point five, to find us a happy median, if you will. Um, I think it is important that we isolate ourselves to the best of our ability. But at the same time, we want to make sure we're not putting our business. And so I really would like to hear, even if it means we have to have a special call.
I would also say that is the will of the council and that is the amount that the council feels comfortable with. The recommendation of the city attorney to put the language in to where the rate or the amount may change would allow you to be able to move forward with the ordinance that you have for second read. So it would... So it would be your amendment.
So would that say, in the, um, in the recommendation from the attorney, how can we try to move forward, but also certainly back to Germa to find out what levels makes sense to keep us insured?
See, we can do that, we can put subject to change, um. We, I would just need guidance from you as to what you would want it to be for, for purposes of tonight. And if that's the Sandy Springs model, or if that's the five billion recommended by GMA, or two fifty, two hundred, I mean, two point five billion, which would be the initial recommendation?
I, I was thinking with the two point five, 'cause that's what they originally said. And make sure we're insured by that level, I think it, it leaves the language up. Yeah, so I, I'm recommending two point five, because if that was the original one given, based on insurance, I'm thinking we could kind of be around that level. Uh, so, uh, the city attorney, if you could recommend where we should change that language and what we have, so that we can move forward.
Okay, so my recommendation would be to, to authorize me to adjust the insurance amounts to those that were in the initial RFP amount for waste services. And those amounts, my understanding, were based on what GMA recommended.
Two point five million.
Yeah, well, they fluctuated, it was, it was, like, you have auto insurance, you have the general commercial policy, so they were various, various amounts that were based on what GMA recommended.
Based on GMA's original, original recommendations to be able to insure the city itself.
Correct. Yeah.
I also wanted to highlight, so I think that's a correct recommendation by the council. I also wanted to highlight that, you know, when looking at the service delivery, we do know that the small contractors are able to subcontract with the larger companies to meet insurance requirements as well. So when you make these decisions, you're kind of setting the market, so there are a variety of different options or, or activities that will take place amongst our service providers. I think lowering to that amount helps, but it also never goes away that those small haulers will be able to contract with the larger providers as well to take on all the insurance requirements.
And, and I think that's helpful, but at the same time, I remember hearing early on that, um, a lot of the larger companies weren't signing up the smaller haulers, so, um, you know, we've heard back and forth, I haven't read any of it, so I'm, I'm just saying, I think it, it allows for both.
Agreed.
And so, um, I think it's, it's a compromise. So I make a motion to amend, uh, to say.
Can I recommend the motion?
Okay, go ahead.
'Cause I, one other thing I'd like to ask you for authorization, and that's after speaking with one of the council members. So the motion would be to make the insurance amounts consistent with the amounts in the previous prior RFP, to change, um, to put language that vendors may subcontract with larger providers to meet insurance requirements. And to put language that with sixty days notice, the city has the option to terminate all contracts. And that's it, you elect to move to the model that, um, council member Lee wanted, um, that you guys had envisioned initially, and that's what having the central service provider and, I'm, I'm confused about the last one, so go back. So option three would be, let's just say, two months down the line, you say, we want to reconsider, um, doing another RFP. This time, you could have that procurement through the city, you may want to give central vendor to, um, go back to the model that you liked initially. If I put that language in, then you would be able to terminate all contracts and to have that option.
Yeah, is that in there, ma'am?
Is that an opt-out clause?
Yeah, it's basically saying that, but, but this is not working for us, and we don't like it, we can switch to another.
I'm, I'm clear about that, but I also have another concern relative to that. So if we're making them purchase, I know I'm running out of time, but we're having them purchase new trash cans and equipment that even got sixty days.
Yeah, and tell them, bye-bye, that's, that's, that's not good business.
Okay, well, then the motion would be just to make a subcontract to amend, to put a vacant subcontract with larger providers to meet insurance requirements and change to the prior RFP insurance, um, numbers. Yeah, that, that was my motion. Pass that forward.
Um, for me, no.
Proper move and second, continue discussion.
Yes. Uh, so I thought that we were going to make it possible for us to raise the insurance limit once, uh, we asked the RIS manager to go back and provide additional documentation. Um, I, I, I understood that we were asking it to go to two point five billion, but if he came back and he went back to, uh, GMA and they said, no, that's still too risky, uh, we need you all to increase it, I thought that, that then, I mean, the, uh, we were supposed to put in the ordinance that our insurance limit is subject to change.
And, and that is correct, so for clarification, when I put in the language, change it back to the prior RFP, I do plan to include language that this is subject to change by the council. So I'll say that the insurance requirements are X, Y, Z, and X on the prior RFP. And then the last line will say, language to the extent this is subject to change at the council's, at the council's discretion.
Okay, and also, does that prevent us from having an opt-out clause? If we go with this rock model, and the customer service is horrible, and it's just not a good fit for the city of South Uzil, 'cause we're still new, and we're not unique to everyone else. So I know we keep comparing ourselves to Sandy Springs, but we're unique, we're not, I mean, their demographics is different. Do we have an opt-out clause anywhere? Because it's my understanding, we're not supposed to, it makes good business sense for us to not enter into anything without an opt-out clause. So do we have any type of opt-out clause?
Well, right now, there's not an opt-out clause. What, what you could do is, you could, if you don't have an opt-out clause, one, you can change it anyway. That just wouldn't be a best practice, because you do want to give vendors notice, and you want them to be able to adjust to whatever policies you're gonna put in place. So I don't recommend just on this firm, you know, canceling this, this, this setup. But you can also just not renew contracts. So when that one-year contract, if you make the decision that I'm gonna move, we're gonna move on from this model, as those contracts expire, um, you can just not renew. Or you can renew and say that it's going to be subject to, um, six months.
And I'm not, I'm not advocating that we don't provide notice. I do believe we should provide notice, like, we should be able to go to somebody and say, we're just not gonna do this, we're not gonna, uh, proceed as we proceed tomorrow, and that's it. I believe we should give at least a sixty-day notice, but I don't want us confined with, with something that's not working for us, because our loyalty is to our constituents.
Yes, and there are ways that we can amend this later to, to address that.
Motion, there's a motion.
Change the.
We have a discussion.
Is it? Um, so, for the benefit of those who are still with us and trying to follow this conversation, this Sandy Springs model is basically, you get to pick whoever you want that's on the list, right, to have sanitation service. Um, who contracts with whom? Are the residents contracting with the sanitation companies directly? And so our opt-out clause would be canceling a contract that a resident made with a private, a two-private entity made amongst themselves. So first, I'm just wondering if that's even, if that's even, um, that, that, again, like, like, as people have said, this is a problem with, with, with trying to be like a city that we're not like, right? So Sandy Springs, uh, they got way more money than us, which is why, which is why they could have these low insurance premiums. You can have a low premium when you got money to pay for the, for the, for the damages. Um, and they have higher rates of homeownership and higher rates of housing occupancy. So they don't have as many empty houses. If a house is empty, if, or if there is an absentee landlord, we are then responsible for picking the sanitation company for however many thousands of empty houses there are. Like, how does that work?
Well, there is a process in here that says that if the city becomes aware that you are not utilizing services, and there's garbage and trash that's accumulating at your residence, then the city can contract with a vendor, an authorized vendor, who we plan to, um, coordinate with after this is approved, if and after this is approved, we plan to coordinate, and then that vendor would provide those services, and then we would, um, build the, similar to what we were going to do with having the, um, tax assessor help us with collection purposes and invoices, we could take that route for just those individuals.
So again, if somebody doesn't contract a service that we contract, we pick the contract and, and make them pay the, make them pay.
We reserve that right here, it's your expression.
Right, so we have dozens of houses that will be doing that. So in, so in addition, we aren't gonna end up, we are going to end up picking a sanitation provider for the city. It's just that the only people that will be subject to use it will be the people who didn't pick someone on their own. So we still have, we, we're still gonna have to have this process where we pick a sanitation provider. We're, there, we are still gonna pay upfront, millions of dollars for them to cover all of the houses that don't get covered. Right?
No.
Who's gonna, who, yeah, so, so, so let me ask it this way. There are houses on my street that people haven't lived in for years, nobody can get in contact with the landlord, which is why they can't even get the trash, right? Code enforcement has had these issues where they can't contact the landlord. We would pick the, we would pick the sanitation service and provider, right?
Well, I wouldn't recommend picking up services for, like, vacant or abandoned properties, because they don't have trash that accumulates.
So if we have landlords that don't, that we can't get in contact with, and they're renters, who picks those services? The renter, does the renter pick it, or does the landlord?
Well, ideally, under this model, it's gonna be those people who leave trash, because you're not gonna be aware realistically of who is not contracting services unless it becomes an issue with trash accumulating.
So the people in our city that don't get trash service now will still not get trash service? And, and they, and we won't know who they are unless the labor force does?
Yeah, unless they leave trash or show some visible evidence, um. Now, we did put language in here when they're required to give notice of who they're servicing, um, but that would require the city to process that data and try to figure out who is not receiving the services of that group, who is actually, um, occupying the premises, and then going after that subset.
And then, Mr. Donald, what is the benefit for a large, for a large hauler to subcontract with a small hauler? What benefit do they get if you're not?
Well, I think, one, it would, it would provide them an easier route to expanding. So I think you mentioned, uh, one of the, or not you, but I think the council and others have mentioned, one of the providers that are already delivering service, well, they could deliver services without, uh, a much larger investment by subcontracting, and that's usually how it works. And in addition to that, whether it's a, a benefit or not, I think the main issue that we wanna look at is, one, we're required by law to deliver the service. There are multiple reasons why we're at this point today, which I won't belabor, but we, we gotta make it a city. So here, we've got two options that we're looking at, and I think, one, you guys have come to the conclusion that you want that the insurance rate that we're recommending was too high, more than fair analysis. And so you lowered that. The second piece is, is this model the, the one that the majority in the willing to council wants? I, I think you have determined that, which is why we're on second read. To look at the other models, I think there are pros and cons to each, which, which you can choose. And, and for each one, it appears that the large, large haulers have the advantage in whichever one that you choose. I think in this model, we're able to kind of narrow it down and provide some opportunities that we couldn't in the other, and so I believe that's why the council has gone in this route. I, to go through all of the different pros and cons, again, we go back to, to three or four months ago. So respectfully, I would say, if this is the model that you guys are, are looking for, and it's fixed, and the issue was the insurance, then if you have settled that, then.
So I, I ask, I ask those questions because I think that they're issued more than the insurance. That's just a party to find in such short notice, right? So I pointed out some other, I was, I was going to, I was going to ask if we could make the contracts a year, so that after a year, we could, uh, you know, make decisions about, but I just, again, I don't know what authority we have to enter into two and private entities contracting with each other.
So their contracts with the city are a year, and so they're, we're, let's look at it, at the model for what it is. So they contract with the city, and they get on our preferred list, is what we're calling, and that status lasts for a year. They evaluate during that time, and then the city does, does not renew. For the purposes of this conversation, let's say that two people don't meet the qualifications, and they're kicked off the list. Then in year two, that you're down to five, and then you pick a contract within those five. So you definitely have the ability and the right to evaluate and make adjustments to the model.
All right, this is my best, my, my, my final question. In the original contract, I believe that the person that we were partnering with was going to put money up to educate the public. Who's gonna educate the public on this model?
So I think the responsibility is joint between those that are on the preferred list and the city, which is why we have, we're able to collect the fees to be able to provide public education, as well as to be able to deliver that, those extended services that you referenced earlier.
I have a concern. My concern is, our staff recommended five million dollars. We dropped down to two point five million dollars, and the large hauler ends up winning anyway. Now, we're in a situation where we have a less, a lesser amount of, a, 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 a greater amount actually, actually of liability than our staff would have recommended us to have anyway. And now we, we have those situations that put other people's money at risk. And I don't wanna get, I'm not a gambler anyway, but I don't wanna gamble with nobody else's money. So I think we should look, look again, I think your initial recommendation of Councilman Royal was about three million, at least three point five million or some, something, you tried to split it a little bit more reasonable than initially?
That was helpful.
I'm sorry, excuse me, I, ultimately, I'm just saying that that split may end up being more favorable for us as a city when it's all over. Yeah, that's, that's, I just wanted that out for consideration. I'm not making a motion, I just left that out for consideration.
Okay, Mr. Yar.
I'd like to know who at the city would be involved in, um, educating the community? And, and specifically, what type of education would be required?
So I think it would be a combination of our communications department and any expertise that we contracted out to help us, uh, get the word out there, similar to other activities that we discussed.
So we have to spend money to tell people that, that we have, um, we have adopted a sanitation plan, that they are responsible for being a part of?
Yes, ma'am. Which we would also do, or someone would do, using that, that same bucket of funding if we used the other model. No matter what we do, when we educate the public, well, it is going to cost, whether it is the purchase of ads, mailers, uh, television, billboard, but any of those activities that we would utilize, there is a cost to do that. And so we would, yes, there would be a cost to provide that public education. And it would be funded by the, uh, fees that we collect through this process.
And is that for all of the cities that have done this, that's what they've done?
Yeah. Yes, whenever cities are providing public education in any capacity, those costs are, are any new program, whether it be sanitation or any new program that they're providing, there is a cost to, for advertising, marketing, outreach, and public education.
Now, that was what I was asking. I understand that, what I wanted to know was whether or not. What I wanted to know was whether or not cities that have taken on sanitation have engaged in, have been engaged in, in wanting to make it work in the future.
Yes, in each model, that occurs, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Gilleyard.
And if I could add, there are also cost-effective tools that we can use. For example, putting notices on our website, asking the vendors to put notices on their website, asking them to stick a flyer that we print into mailers, emails that they send out, asking them to provide notice. So there are cost-effective ways to communicate.
Let me expand from what you just said, just another way. Originally, ten, ten, five million dollars, everybody was in concert. I might correct, or that was kind of true. If everybody was in concert, it was five million dollars.
The five million?
Yes.
I was given the recommendation by staff, and I didn't dispute it.
Okay, all right. But let me, let me just add something to this. If I could find a way, Mr. Donald, and I'm not sure what, how we can do it, we can have this conversation. And get everything kind of milled out before we get here. I think that would be very good for us. We spent over an hour on the first issue. It's the first one. And then we pulled stuff off the conveyor table. Y'all may be here to want to drop, but I'll be anything. Now, let me just say this, here's my issue. And does this take in consideration? You know, there's give and take both ways. When people want to do this in either way, we sit up every day talking about that our city is built on small business. We say it in the hall everywhere we go. City built on small business. You got to take small business sometimes. So, I think there's, there's got to be a mutual benefit. And here's what I mean. Have we looked at the managed liability on behalf of the contractor? Now, what do I mean by that? I mean, there are things that he can do that make us be able to lower our liability. Okay? Give you some examples. Put it on the note. Driver education. On all drivers. How do they stand up on his part? And will that be a consideration in how we're going to deal with him? Another one is, have we checked their track record, their insurance record? And see where they have been and where they are today? And recommend any improvement in that area? So I'm really, listen, I've been insurance business for thirty years. And let me tell you something, you can never insure your way out of anything. You may think you got enough liability. It's kind of like what Mike Tyson said, I said the other night. Everybody got a program until they get busted in the mafia. And so, it's subjective. I bet they subjected. But I think there's a happy medium on the part of those who want to do business. And what can the business do to help us lower our liability possibilities? I'm not hearing that. And that's what, I think, I agree with a little what everybody said of it. I really do. But I think that one thing, Mr. Donald, that we can look at the, what is the managed liability on the part of the hauler? It may mean that the hauler may have somebody that, they have twenty-five years with a driver's record is bad, he got to go.
That's right.
He got to go. And so, those are the things, I'm not, I'm a little bit uncomfortable because I'm not hearing that. I'm not hearing a list of managed liability issues that we can use to help these guys to attain what they need to obtain. I mean, you know, you can't, that one liability. We got eight liability sitting up here. But then you walk up to the door, and I'm sitting home, that's a liability. All right? So I just would like to see that, Mr. Donald. I think I could understand more if we just tried to make sure that. And I think the hauler group would be able to go along with that. Now, what is your track record? How are your drivers? How many drivers' education courses they need to take a year? You know, all these kinds of things to help lower our risk, Mr. Risk Management, to help lower our risk on the part of the city. I'd like to see some of that. So you got your face. Okay, Ms. Gilleyard?
No, I just thought about something though, is, you know, the, when we decided that we were going to go with one vendor, but that vendor had had small contractors under them. Would that one vendor have provided the insurance? And the small vendor was looking under them and under their insurance? That's a question.
Excuse me, we can't hear her, it's like with a microphone.
Uh, it's hard for her, you're getting nothing. I'm sorry, sir, we're going to make sure you hear it. Ms. Gilleyard, would you repeat yourself?
Yes, I said, when we originally started working on this, it was supposed to be one vendor, and the small vendors were going to be under that one vendor. So under that model, with that one vendor, with the smaller vendors acting under that vendor's insurance plan. And the reason why I'm asking this question is because it's the case that, then, is it something that we could work out with the larger vendors that we would use to subcontract a smaller vendor?
So, yes, ma'am, the small vendors could, could have and can, even under this model, be covered under the liability if they contracted a larger vendor. So that, that same process that was available through the RFP is also available through this proposed model.
So, if that's the case, then we know that the smaller vendors don't have to worry about having five million dollars of insurance, correct?
So, that is correct if they're partnering with a larger vendor. If they're on their own, then that is not correct.
But if they're advantaged then, to get the contract and to be under the big ones and not have to even deal with the insurance issues? Because they want to be in business, they want the business. So, so how could that work out?
Well, I would, I would not give any advice to a business on how to coordinate what would be profitable to them. I think there are probably just as many advantages for them to operate independently as there are for them to partner with somebody else. And each vendor is, we're specifically talking about small vendors. I think, you know, one of the vendors, we heard, you know, mention that, hey, if I have to carry his own, then I would change my model to pass the cost on. We don't know, that might be a competitive model. Someone else may say, well, it's going to allow me to not have to worry about adjusting my prices and contract with a larger vendor. So, I mean, I think there are pros and cons, and I personally will stay away from advising someone on how to, you know, make decisions in their business. But I do think there are options either way.
Uh, Mr. Donald?
That was our first model. Our first model was going to take into consideration the smaller vendors, but they will have to be a part of the larger one. That's how we started out. So now, are we saying that that was the good model?
So that was, that was a different model because it was required to have the larger vendor to contract with the smaller hauler. This model is different than that one. So the differences in the model is what requires the way everyone is going to operate in commerce. And so, in the old model, then there's a requirement, and it probably limited small haulers to be able to contract with that one vendor, and you probably have less option. Under this model, I would imagine that there's the potential to have more haulers, some of which would contract with the larger haulers, some of them would go out on their own. Each of them, I would also imagine, we heard from a gentleman today, is him and one other person delivering the service. You heard from somebody else who's delivering services in multiple parts of the city and has a sizable small operation and would probably pass those costs on. Just those two examples alone show that there is different ways that each vendor, whether it's large, small, or medium, would deliver services. Again, I think I am not prepared to tell them or make recommendations on how they would manage their business.
Mr. Donald, and another thing too is that the fact of having small businesses go with large businesses, that's a premise. I mean, I don't know where anything binding on that. And then if a small business goes to a large business, what their discussion about in terms of a contract between the two and then is their discussion?
Oh, yes, yes, sir.
You know, and then you can have a larger business tell a small business, well, you got to have five million dollars worth of insurance. And then that kills that. So I don't think that that discussion is going to get us anywhere because we have no, we have no reason to believe that a larger business is going to hire the smaller business. So, it's kind of a moot point. Mr. Baker, I'll give you a minute too.
I don't need them.
I just wanted to make an amendment to the motion in reference to the ideas that you dispute regarding the requirements for drivers to assist us in lowering our risk or lowering the cost of insurance. I just wanted to.
Yeah?
Yeah.
That's managed liability on the part of, the party we're dealing with.
Yeah.
It's an amendment, it doesn't have to be. Uh, what they're asking, Madam Attorney, is that to put in the piece on managed liability on the part of the contractor to help insist in lowering liability.
Okay. Now, ideally, I would love that we could, if we could adopt with the two items, and then we can give instruction to Risk Management to come up with a list of recommendations. And then at next meeting, we add that list to this model. Add an amendment to the ordinance. And that would give us time to actually come up with something that's ideal, that fits this situation, and, you know, just best practices.
If we're going to leave it at the two point five, I would definitely want to do that.
So, your amendment is saying the two point five, correct?
That's what.
Well, for clarification, I'm not necessarily putting two point five. My current plan is to take the insurance requirements that were recommended by GMA out of the RFP and to insert those into this ordinance.
No, we said two point five.
That's what we want.
We said two point five. So it's two point five across the board because it was several different categories of insurance?
Yeah, I think you should.
It's subject to change.
Yes, some of those items are going to be less than the two point five. So I don't think you want to make it, I don't think you want to make it two point five across the board. Remember, in the RFP, you had the two point five for the highest category. I think you had less than five hundred thousand for driver or something. So I think you want to take what was in the RFP because it covers every category that you have to have.
But that current motion up the floor is...
Okay, but, Mr. Mayor, right here on the insurance, letter G, in the current ordinance, line number eight forty-three, it says environmental liability coverage in about a five billion. And what we're saying is that instead of five billion, we want two point five. Okay? And on, it says commercial, general liability insurance, five billion. Limit of liability per current, the law insurance, instead of five billion, we're saying we want two point five. On number two, five million limit liability per current personal injury, we're saying right now, all of this is subject to change based on a recommendation from Risk, but as of right now, we're saying instead of five billion, two point five.
Well, I can do that too, you just need to amend the motion because the current motion is to use the RFP numbers. So you would need to amend the motion to use two point five throughout, with the exception that you may not want to use two point five in the employer's liability insurance.
Right, and, and, and we keep representing the current, I mean, the RFP. But remember, we voted to throw that out. So I just will be caution us that we need to stop representing something that has a vote to throw out. Uh, two point five is what we're saying we want unless the Risk Management come back after further research saying that we keep that, we are, it was recommended that we need to increase that.
Okay, so the current motion, if you accept, and actually, I would say if you accept this amendment, the procedural that you technically would vote, but...
So instead of referencing basically the original RFP, we're just with two point five billion throughout the...
For everything except employer's liability, which would stay at the five hundred thousand. And then adding the language, um...
So you would be there, what is left then?
Yes, it would be to change all insurance requirements in the current ordinance to two point five million from five million. And three million, and then, with the exception of the employer's liability insurance.
Because it's at half a million in your current ordinance now? I think that's what she's saying. So you're saying two point five million everywhere, except that, because you would need that to happen.
And then I would also put the language that you can subcontract with other providers to be insurance partners.
Well, I'm not going to say anything because that's not what I'm saying. I'm going to focus. No, what I'm saying is, when you, when you have managed liability, and you have, instead of you getting discounts on your interest, that's what I'm saying here.
They take the safety test and all that stuff.
In other words, this two point five million, but I got all these things, safety and everything going for me. And I should be rewarded for maintaining that by reduction in my liability. That's what I would say. Everybody does. All they pay for them.
Yes, sir. Would that be the oldest on the insurance carry?
Yeah, they have, we really set up right criteria. They would have to live up to it, uh, to get the deduction. That's all I'm saying. You follow me now?
Yeah, I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
Now, as far as establishing what, doing that tonight is not probably really...
I understand, I just want to put it out there. So when you do it, you have in your mind what I'm looking for.
Okay, and we do plan to come back to get with Risk Management, and then come back in the meeting to give you guys recommendations that you incorporate.
Right.
Well, please make sure your communication is moved with the council because we have a good relationship. Because like the mayor has said, we can spend probably an hour and a half on this application, and we got to keep it moving.
And let me, let me, this premium I'm talking about, I just made raise some premiums that were put in.
Okay.
Okay, let's vote. All of those in favor? Okay. The passes.
I hear it, twenty-five.
Here you are, that's five. Mr. Baker, about here.
I just...
And I got you there. And Mr. Gilleyard is a no vote. Our county member's saying no. We're here at ten o'clock. And, oh, y'all know?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're all going to go to the whole agenda?
No. I think that we should, I think, if we're going to have a, I'm sorry.
I think, go ahead, go ahead. I think, go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, I had a, I had a resolution to amend the meeting schedule for us to have three meetings a month, because we always end up having three meetings a month. Sounds like we already have a third meeting scheduled. Uh, I think that we should table, I think we should have a set, we should set an appointment. If it's ten thirty, if it's eleven, I think out of respect for our staff, who has been working already in eight-hour day, uh, we should just set an appointment. And whatever we don't get done by ten thirty or eleven o'clock, we should table to the next, to this special call meeting, that we're all going to have to have.
So, I'm going to, you didn't even take a session, you said, Madam?
So, we probably need about five minutes for that.
So, I'm going to make a...
If, yeah, if we leave it aside, but there's still some important items that I believe are on the agenda, so, I mean, I know we've got the public works.
We're going to have, we're going to have to figure out meetings and how we're going to be doing we had one, uh, special call meetings that we had regularly. That's just a fact. That's a fact enough, that's my, you know, and we just got to figure out how we're going to do this, because it is not, it's not good for the people who come here, it's not good for us, it's not good for the people who work for us. And so, we're going to have to, we're going to have, I mean, y'all can say, if that's why they got mayor voting. The mayor would be home.
So, if I, if I, I would like to make a motion that we end this meeting at ten thirty, whatever on business, uh, if there is a ten thirty, we put it on the special call meeting.
Thank you, sir.
I will, second discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I hear the concern, but I would like to remind you that we are on the cusp of transition. We all knew when we started for this job, and I'm not giving this respectful to anyone, that this was going to be a huge undertaking. Now, once our transition is complete, then we can look to cut back and be more, but we got to get this transition complete, and a lot of these, well, you just, we just discussed last week that a lot of these ordinances and a lot of these, uh, resolutions have to be in place for transition. And we can't keep pushing stuff off, saying next meeting, next meeting, that's why we're here. We're here. So, I would say that, I mean, I understand y'all want to go at ten thirty, and I want to go too, but I'm willing to burn the night off so we can get this transition complete. Our backs are against the wall for a lot of this stuff.
I, and all due respect to you, Councilwoman, I believe that we can get all these transitions done, and no delay, and we have, we'll come back, with all of them done, we'll still be talking ourselves today. It's not so much the, what we are on the agenda, the items we have on the agenda, it's not so much that. But what it is, is it's constant, some of this is repetitious, that we, someone says something, and someone says the same thing fifteen minutes later. And I don't think that that is the item we have, it's not the problem, it's how we... And so, I don't think if we have to get everything done, we would have the same problem, because that's what we do.
So, maybe we need to look at doing a committee structure.
I don't care what we, I think that's the option, whatever we're going to look at.
Because this, this stuff is hard, and decisions are hard, and we have to, I mean, we debated for over two hours on sanitation orders, and we haven't even got to talk to one shit. That's going to be another contingency to be...
Please, Mr. Caleed?
Mr. Mayor, will you please move to the next item on the agenda to talk to us?
Thank you, Mr. Caleed.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Caleed. So, we agreed, to limit the meeting tonight?
Yes.
What was it about, you got about?
All right, any further discussion on it? All of them? All of those in favor?
Stop at ten thirty?
Okay, I'm going to say, go ahead.
Yeah, so let's move.
I'll be all right.
Are you ready for the next item? Roman number O three, for first reading, sponsored by Councilmember Rao, ordinance two thousand eighteen dash zero forty-two, ordinance to adopt regulations for maintenance and use of rights of water for permitting of special events, for permitting of utility encroachments, and for other lawful purposes.
Just quickly, this is, um, in, it works kind of in tandem with the telecommunications standards. This ordinance seeks to adopt regulations to maintain the use of our right of way, and deals with permitting for special events and utility encroachments. And so, this is the first read, so no other discussion needed.
All right, Ms. Webber?
Next, you actually have three, but we can do this action item that...
Just action item now, and come back to the air.
So, you know, we have a few on the context. So, request approval of an intergovernmental agreement binding between the City of South Fulton and the City of Peachtree Corners for provision of public works services, this will be agreement two thousand eighteen dash zero twenty-seven.
I accept the motion.
I make a motion to approve the IGA with City of Peachtree Corners for public works. Second?
I'll remove the second in discussion. All of those in favor? That's, that's a proof you're there, go see it.
Okay, so you have a few action items as well that were pulled from today, consent agenda?
Go ahead, give me first.
The first item is, it's about me, page one, request approval of an assignment and assumption of lease and consent of landlord for real property located at fifty-three ninety-nine Old National Highway. Yes, so this is for the, uh, Old National Precinct that we're currently occupying, uh, through the transition with Fulton County for a variety of different reasons, um, many of which is coordination with, uh, Fulton County. The lease has not yet been executed, and so we're add while we are paying on it. We're asking you for the authority to execute the lease, but I will, uh, be forthcoming in that, uh, through this transition, we have not come to this final agreement on the exit clause, and so, if we do not come to an agreement, we're not assigned the lease. I accept the motion.
I make the motion to request approval of five-three-nine-nine Old National Highway lease assignment for the police, uh, headquarters.
Subject to conditions.
Subject to conditions and ability to, um, have a house, house out clause.
Second by Ms. Gunn, discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor? All of those in favor? That's approved.
Uh, six, one?
Yes. Next item?
At the top of page two, letter G, request approval of a sublease between the City of South Fulton and Fulton County, Georgia, that's Tramal Grove Park, agreement two thousand eighteen dash zero twenty-nine.
I'm going to take a motion.
This was pulled by Councilmember Dawson.
I make a motion to approve sublease between the City of South Fulton and, um, Fulton County for Tramal Grove Park. Second?
I'll remove the second, any discussion?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion at some...
Okay.
So, Madam, uh, City Attorney and City Attorney, are there any outstanding afterlawn taxes regarding this, um, this property? Because I think I read something in there, and the type of stuff has been more due to the county. I'm just trying to make sure that there's an outstanding, uh, taxes that the city will incur when we take this property on.
Not outstanding tax, but an outstanding, uh, debt is still attached to the property. And so, the reason we're not buying it outright is because that debt is a responsibility of Fulton County. And so, what we're doing is allowing them to be able to satisfy that debt prior to us taking it on. So, we will be doing, I guess this will be considered a short-term lease assignment on Tramal Grove, uh, Park, where we control the operating. And then, once that debt has been settled, we will take it on.
Do we have, uh, do you plan to settle the debt before transition?
No, that debt, um, I think it's some date in two thousand nineteen, it's in the document, but it's the, so the agreement is pursuant to this contract, is that they will continue to pay the debt, that we will sublease for the duration of those debt payments, and that at a date specific in two thousand nineteen, when the debt is paid, that they will sell us all parcels that are under their control, as well as that were the subject of the debt, at the hundred dollar rate or rate.
Uh, why did we make a demand for payment of debt? I mean, I'm, I'm just curious, you know, uh, first of all, you know, we, we have until the transition to settle all of the indebtedness on any property, am I correct?
No, that's, that's not necessarily out of best practices and out of caution. Our aim is to have all properties that we go to acquire under some type of agreement. So, the aim for this property is to have a agreement in place that sets parameters moving forward.
How much is the debt? How much is the debt?
I think it's about three hundred and eighty thousand, I believe.
So, counting, counting that debt and counting the, counting the fire station, that's six hundred thousand dollars.
No, we are not paying the debt on this.
I understand that, because that's, that's you paying on three hundred thousand on the fire station.
Correct, correct.
I'm just saying, why, you know, I think Fulton County paid a three hundred thousand dollar debt. I mean, I just, the way I feel. So, I'm saying is, why if we just don't ask the man that they, uh, that they pay the entire debt off?
We can, um, send a notice saying that we demand that you pay the debt off. Um, do I think the county will respond to it, though? Do I think it will result in litigation promptly?
But I guarantee you, if you owe them three hundred thousand, they'll be sending you a letter quick, fast, and in a hurry. So, I'm just saying, they may not do it, but I just think we need to demand, demand the indebtedness be paid off. I mean, we're compromising and compromising and compromising, and it gets ridiculous at a point. The county got way more money than we do, all right? And so, it was nothing for this county to go ahead and pay three hundred something off debt off, and we don't have to be dicking with this stuff. Because something's going to happen, they're going to have to, for that three hundred thousand dollars, they're going to control some of that property, right?
No, we, we take exclusive control and possession over all portions of the property.
Which means that we've got maintenance and everything, right?
So, just tell them, pay something off, we need our money.
I mean, I'm just, it's just me, but I mean, it's, and then if they turn us down, we go to something else. But I just think that we need to make a demand, probably.
And what was that date again, that you sent?
Um, it's...
Go ahead, he hears thee.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to know, um, City Attorney, do you know how long it's going to take them to pay their debt off?
It's twenty, it's twenty nineteen, and they provided us the date, I don't know. Uh, our attorney may have it here handy, but, uh, from the time that we started those discussions, it was about a year.
So, it's December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen?
So, I would, so, when the agreement is made, so we could demand for them to pay the debt, and I think we're fine with that, we can take that back. But, there is nothing that stops us from taking over the property. So, when you have this agreement in place, it is a goodwill agreement between us and the county. We'll rent it for a dollar, and we're giving them enough time to pay off the debt. But, we are, the contract, once this agreement and this contract is in place, there is no more fighting that we have to do. And at December thirty-first of two thousand nineteen, or before, when they settle the debt, then we receive the property in full for the same price as if it was in transition. And I think, at a high level, what our attorney was saying is, is that instead of litigating, if we have this agreement, we get the same result, and we are the sole operator of the parks and the entrance. So, we believe that is a quality agreement on this particular...
My, my thing, I'm, my thing, that guy might, if I was on, I might even know it. I'd have to, that's a pay my company.
Well, I'm saying, both of these facilities, that was alone taken out against the properties prior to transition, that we are potentially holding the bag for. And so, I think during executive session, we can discuss it further.
Okay, I got you. Uh, any further discussion, if you, if you...
Yes.
Okay, let's go. I'm sorry, I kind of want to get y'all.
One dollar.
All right, all of those in favor? And get y'all, how you voting, I, okay, that's unanimous. Ms. Webber, go ahead.
The next item is sponsored by Councilmember Jackson, a resolution establishing the process for the appointment of legislative specialists and for other lawful purchases, resolution two thousand eighteen dash zero twenty-nine.
I'm going to take a motion.
And I actually have a motion that I can recommend based on the consensus, um, in our discussion earlier that may help expedite. And that motion is to approve the resolution two thousand eighteen oh fifty-nine, with the exception that we change legislative aides to legislative specialists, that we remove the grievance provisions, and that we change the reportable party to human resources.
I motion to approve the resolutions with our city attorney's recommendation.
I say...
I'll remove the second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor? Good, let's go.
Okay, so, I take you to the, um, letter M, you have letter M in M. M is sponsored by Councilmember Willis, resolution two thousand eighteen dash zero sixty-two, a resolution promoting tourism development to increase the hotel, hotel tax charge within the city from five to eight percent for other lawful purposes. This one removed as requested by Councilmember Rao.
I approve that, we approve the resolution two thousand eighteen zero sixty-two?
Second, I'll remove the second discussion, Ms. Webber.
Uh, first of all, I want to say I am in support of this, but I am particularly, uh, well, I'm seeking amendment on the three percent that's earmarked, um, in this current resolution for the general fund. In support of previous legislation we passed by the Public Arts Commission, which calls for three percent for public art.
Um, I'm going to not approve that, uh, because we want to actually go back. Some of us are, are in discussion, we want some of it to go to public art, but we don't want all of it to go to public art.
Uh, again, because again, we've already passed legislation on this. And, um, you know, the way this came back to me was kind of, uh, undermined that legislation on public art. And we didn't have nominations on the consent agenda for people to start on this committee.
Oh, we, oh, we, and, and we're not saying that a committee, the committee can't exist. We're not saying that, but in that ordinance, there was a allocation to take three percent of hotel, hotel tax and allocate all of it to public arts without any discussion of the author of this ordinance. And so, are you asking us to vote on that amendment?
Because, no, no, let's be clear, that was an ordinance that had two reads to be voted on. And again, when this came back, this resolution, which is weaker than the ordinance, earmarked at three percent for general fund, when in fact, it was previously earmarked for public art.
Can I clarify? Because I think there's a little bit of confusion. So, the three percent that we have in the ordinance that earmarked for the Public Arts Commission, that is three percent of the total amount collected, and that is different from this three percent. This three percent is three percent of every dollar that is taxed. So, what will happen is, you will have, under this resolution, you, you will have three percent of every dollar that is taxed go to the general fund, and you will still have more than enough funds from that amount that can be used for general purposes to go towards the Public Arts Commission. So, my recommendation would be to consider bringing back the Public, um, Arts Commission ordinance, and potentially raising that from three percent of the total amount collected to an amount that you're more comfortable with, maybe perhaps twenty percent, et cetera.
Well, actually, I also asked for the CFO to look at this, as you know, I copied you on that email.
As you know, I copied you on that email. And based on what our current revenue is for, if you're talking about a hundred thousand dollars, uh, let's just say, I think last year was sixty thousand. Uh, that's a small amount of money, but I'm even upping it to a hundred thousand. We've been talking about three thousand dollars a year. It will take forever to make any kind of investment in public arts. So three percent is a minimal amount of money. And so, while I support tourism, I think public art is very important. And it also had a lot of, the definition, it was very broad in terms of dealing with improvements and our right of ways and some other things that can help with the utilization of our cities, so.
Madam Councilman, would you mind, I think there's a little bit of a caveat in that explanation that Mr. Pike is prepared to explain, cause I think, I noticed a few nuances that weren't quite accurate. Would you?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, I'm trying to be very brief. Um, I just wanna make sure that we, we understand, so you can't separate a three percent of the overall collection and then the percentage breakdown that's proposed in the ordinance. So you can't separate those two out. So the eight percent, only three percent of that eight percent that you're gonna use for public art can be used for that. So it's not the overall tax collection of hotel motel tax, because you're bound by law based on those breakdowns that are proposed in the, the ordinance. So, um, obviously, it's the council's will, uh, what happens when the three percent goes to the general fund. Uh, but I, I just wanna make sure that we're not confusing the two, uh, as it relates to what you can do with the tax.
Right, and I think, um, in our clarification, when I, um, communicated with the CFO, I think we got a different understanding from how the first one was written, and it's thought to do exactly that. Um, the, the three percent that, again, could be used for any general purpose per the law was for public art, but whatever that language, that little nuance in the way it original, so I'm open and amended it, but I don't want this to go for, and this goes for a vote from the public. And it, it's kinda already done, it kinda rose that out to me on this, or.
What I would suggest is that, you, you requested for an amendment to be done to this ordinance. I'm suggesting that we approve it the way that it is. So if you would like the amendment, call for a vote, let's vote on it, so we can move on.
So, um, it sounds like we have a, a ordinance that's, that we've written an ordinance that's in conflict with the ordinance that we already passed.
No, actually, that's...
A resolution, or, I, I don't know. Go ahead, go ahead.
So I was, to, to clarify, the ordinance that you've written is three percent of the amount collected. The three percent that is in this ordinance is not three percent of the amount collected. It is three percent of the dollar that is taxed. So I think the problem is, is that Councilwoman Ralph intended for the prior ordinance to be three percent of the amount that's taxed versus three percent of the amount that's collected, because there is a substantial difference between those two figures.
So, Mr. Donald, where are we with that legislative process? Is this, is, is this going through staff review? Do we have a fiscal impact statement, like, like, because it seems like we're just, we're just up here writing legislation that doesn't, that doesn't, um, work with the other legislation that we've already passed. So I think that that has to be a part of our legislative process. We should, we probably should be doing that in a meeting.
No disagreement here, I think the legislative process is ready. We have, you see, an extremely long agenda, and so some, uh, executive decisions were made regarding what goes on in office, definitely be a part, or we'll definitely advocate for it to be a part of the next, um, regular meeting agenda, and hopefully, council will take it on and move that forward.
So, so I think, I think a thing to do, um, since, since number one, if we're talking about, if we're talking, if, if there's, if there's language that is calling for a vote, clearly, the ballots have already been printed for November twenty eighteen. So we have plenty of time before twenty of nineteen to do this, so why don't we hold this? That, that would be my suggestion, would we hold this? Let's work it through this legislative process that we've worked on doing, and make sure that everything conforms with everything else. Unless, unless, uh, Mr. Pike, do you have some reason that we, that we need to pass this tonight?
Well, well, just a part of clarity, so this doesn't go to the ballot for the voters who vote on. Once it goes to the General Assembly, once they get approval, then it just comes back to the council for you to set the tax rate that you wanna collect. This doesn't go on, upon a ballot after that.
Okay, so it, it's gonna go to the General Assembly, and once it goes, it's all, then it comes back to you all to make the ordinance for what level you're gonna protect. Right, right, so it goes, it goes to the, it goes to the General Assembly in January, two months from now, and then they have three months to make a decision on it. So again, I don't think that it's a hurry, and, um, I also think that, that part of the reason that we had these problems, these agendas, Mr. Mayor, is that, that you said that we were not going to do anything that was not transition critical. This doesn't seem like it's transition critical, and, and like, if we're gonna make these rules, we just gotta stay some right.
Um, this is not transition critical, but our legislators asked us for this because they do start the prefiled process, and they'll give us any answers for our legislative agenda. Again, I am requesting and asking, uh, this, uh, council to approve this resolution as is, resolution promoting tourism and development to increase hotel motel tax charge with the city from five to eight percent, and for other lawful purpose, that is the purpose of this resolution, to ask the delegation to sponsor legislation in General Assembly. Um, uh, I'll call for the previous question.
Girl, we can, we can vote, we can, we can take a discussion.
Yes.
So let's call, vote. All those, so.
So I have a previous question, man.
So is there really a problem? I, I'm just, I, I'm sorry, gee.
My issue was, from, from, they, they called for a previous question, so let's take a, uh, you got a second? Second, alright, discussion on the previous question. Hearing all those in favor?
Is this a vote, a vote, or a...
This is a vote, on the previous, they go to the previous, to stop the debate.
This is a vote to stop the debate?
Yes, it's a vote to stop the debate, right? Okay, so, uh, all those in favor? Uh, all those in favor of the previous question?
Oh.
A bigger vote, the vote, it's on, the vote is on the team, excuse me. All those in favor? Okay, nevermind.
She's trying to, she's trying to cheat on it for this to be approved.
Right, her motion.
I don't know, they say accept it as is without.
So what this does, um, Councilmember...
No, 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 no votes?
No, I'm gonna state it by motion. I re, I wanna state it by motion, cause she doesn't understand what we're voting on. So I'm gonna state my motion, is that okay?
I don't think so, is positive, attorney?
Yeah, if, if, if she requests clarification of the motion, then it's not an issue to restate it. But I'm, correct, I didn't hear her request that.
Is that what you requested clarification? Cause she said she was confused.
Ah, damn, she have to request it.
I would like clarification, if there is a problem between, cause it doesn't sound, you just said it was different.
Right.
Both of these are different, so.
Uh, I'm trying to stop this debate. Uh, but you want, you want clarification, you can make a clarification. You wanna restate your motion, Ms. Willis?
This resolution is promoting tourism and development to increase hotel motel tax from five percent to eight percent. What this is doing is requesting that we vote to go to the General Assembly to allow us to increase hotel motel tax over five percent. That's all this resolution is doing, right? Remember, we were collecting at seven percent, and I had to bring this back into the, to five percent. All this is doing is asking, now we're going before the General Assembly, asking them to give us permission to collect at a higher rate over five percent. If we do not do this, then we can stay at five percent.
Okay, let's go. Nice debate. Can you do it? She's about to debate.
That's fine. Yeah, we voted for people.
All those in favor?
Of the General Assembly?
Yes.
And then, uh, no, she, uh...
Let's go, Y'all, what's your vote? Yeah, that passes, thank you. Uh, next.
Alright, the next item is, is letter M, resolution selecting a city lobby as soon for other lawful purposes. This item is sponsored by Councilmember Glebe, under resolution two thousand and eighteen dash zero sixty three. Uh, I'll just say quickly, we've been saying that we need a lobby, but we don't have a process for picking the lobby, so, there's a process for picking the lobby.
You had a motion?
Uh, no, I said that was his next move. So...
I'm gonna take a motion, brother.
Um, so we pulled it to the, so your motion is that we can have a session to talk about, and that, that...
Well, it's a big motion, so you, actually, actually, uh, I'd just like to withdraw the whole thing. It's two twenty five, we, we can do it in time.
Alright.
Second.
Ms. Mayor?
Oh, you want me to...
You drew it, you drew it.
Let's go, go ahead. Okay, you've got, back on page three, you have two discussion items. The first item is transportation discussion regarding Campbellton Road and Jones Road, and Campbellton Road and Stonewall Hill Road.
Yep. No, 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 no. The one, what, you, did you have a five point to this, this panel? You didn't have one, did you?
No, no, I don't have one.
No, he doesn't either.
Uh, let's go.
It looks like it's you.
Information is forthcoming to you guys.
So you can start.
Yep, you can start, and they pass, you passing it out.
Good evening, Mayor, and Council. On September eighteen, the C.S.A. Fulton and Georgia D.O.T. met with the staff to discuss the Campbellton Road and Jones, uh, and Jones Road, as well as the Campbellton and Stonewall Hill. After discussions, uh, at Georgia D.O.T.'s office, we got agreed, came back, and have a work session with you all, and to discuss the findings of what will be the best alternative for Campbellton Road and Jones Road, as well as the Campbellton and Stonewall Hill. Uh, Fulton County contracted with American Engineers to design both intersections. The findings from the engineer in point of view was recommend, uh, a dual roundabout at Campbellton and Jones, uh, Jones Road. The findings from Georgia D.O.T. is the same, and it is, uh, our recommendation that the traffic studies and recommendations from the staff stands as a, as a dual roundabout for that, uh, particular location. Should we proceed with that, uh, recommendation? Georgia D.O.T. has committed to fund anything above one point, uh, four and seventy five million dollars. So the project has T plus funds at this point, and she will proceed with the roundabout. The state will manage anything to ensure that the project is being built under a local, uh, under a small P E P process, and, um, it will, uh, bring additional revenues to this project for about another two million dollars from the Georgia D.O.T. And should you have any questions on this particular project? I have, uh, our traffic engineer from the county, as well as Georgia D.O.T. here. So before I can move on to, to the next project, uh, I will be glad to entertain our discussion of the questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Burke, did something you have to take action on?
I'm not aware of that.
There is no action that needs to be taken, but it is a request from Georgia D.O.T. that the city signs, uh, a letter of recommendations for the state to proceed with the roundabout. You should have with you, um, the dual roundabout proposal, and it traditionally is taken proposed as well.
This is a...
This is my issue.
Go ahead, Council. Okay, Council, go ahead. Mr. Proctor. Council, give me.
Um, the city council, the association has, has made to, um, the whole bid so that they can thoroughly review it and, um, engage in some more, um, conversation with the community. So that means, uh, not signing anything tonight until they have an opportunity, uh, to review it.
Um, Mr. Mayor? I, I just wanna make sure that we understand that this is a project on the corner of Jones Road and Ninety Two. And so, I understand Cedar's Road, uh, is requesting, but there's also half of the road that runs to District Three. And so, we, some of us went to G.I., and we met with them in person, and they gave us justifiable reasons why they are not going to move forward with a light. My question to you, uh, Mr. Maslow, is, if we, what is our timeframe? Are we at risk of losing funding if we don't move forward with this? Because for me, public safety is a concern. We have had multiple fatalities at that intersection. Residents are calling for an upgrade to the intersection, and while I originally, and the mayor was originally advocating for a light, we understand that it's not likely a light is gonna be approved, or they're not going to move a light. I have additional documentation that was sent to me tonight from G.I., and I'm glad you're here, maybe you can come up to speak to why we're not gonna get a light, um, at the intersection. The option to not do nothing is not an option for me. I may want a Mercedes now, but I have to, but I have to drive my Ford Flex until I can afford a Mercedes. And so, that's how I'm looking at this. I may want a traffic light there, but they made it clear, when I took time out of my schedule, along with some of my other colleagues, and went down to G.I. and met with them in person, they made it clear that a light is not going at that intersection. And I'm glad you're here, can you please speak to why a light is not going at that intersection?
I'm Paul Denar, I'm the District Preconstruction Engineer for Georgia D.O.T. Uh, yes, thank you all for coming down to the department and speaking with us face to face about these issues abroad. Uh, the traffic study that we discussed, and it can be given to you all for the record, and copies, or I can send copies to you, um, via email to the city staff as well. One of the things that we did when we vetted this project was we initiated an intersection safety study, or actually, three of the intersections along those, along this Ninety Two corridor, uh, Butler Road, uh, Jones Road, and Du Moon. And we looked at those intersections and compared all of the different alternatives. Uh, and we have the data, we drew, we grew the traffic, we took counts, grew that traffic out. Um, there's a national guideline called, uh, M U T C D, which is the Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Devices. It actually has a guideline, it's our national guideline that sets the thresholds, um, for signalizing an intersection. So we went out there, we did our counts, um, we looked at those national guidelines and standards, and at this particular intersection, it did not meet those thresholds. And then, we looked at the other alternatives, like a roundabout, a continuous green, uh, some other things, uh, unsignalized, things actually have drawings and all this, so I'll get this for the council to look at. But the biggest thing that we saw was that, based on the crashes that we were seeing, particularly at Jones Road intersections, were those angle crashes. And in two thousand and seventeen, those crashes of those type actually spiked. And a roundabout at that particular intersection eliminates angle crashes. So based on the data and information, the signal not meeting warrants, the crashes, uh, uh, that we had, the crash trends that we had out there with those angle collisions, and the fact that the best tool in our toolbox is the roundabout. At that particular location, our study shows that the roundabout is what we selected as the preferred alternative. And that's when we engaged the, uh, the county or the city of South Fulton about, oh, you all have funds here as well, uh, we wanna commit safety funds from the state to address some of the crash issues at this particular intersection.
So my question to you, at this point, at this time, is there any way that you all wanna change your recommendation for us to get a signal at that, at a traffic light signal at Jones Road?
Not based on this study.
Okay. If we do not move forward, how much money are we forwarding?
We will be using T S plus funds in the amount of one million four hundred seventy-five thousand that was budgeted for this particular project, and anything above that, it will be a contribution from the Georgia DOT.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, is that right? Mr. Mayor?
In two thousand and seventeen, and I believe it was seventeen, I might got the wrong date, but a light was not meant for this intersection. With all of the development that is going on, that is planned for that particular, uh, street between Butler and South Fulton Parkway, which is going to amount to a double dot warehouse with, with trucks going in and out off of Hall Road and in and out of the, uh, Transit Ninety-two. That to me is what this is really all about. Because putting a light, and I believe that most of my, um, um, conscientious citizens feel the same way, putting a light there instead of being rounded out makes a lot of sense. The, the state is going to have to either declare eminent domain or buy land from the Chestnut Ridge subdivision, Burke Strasser is used on the other side of the street. And there are people that, District Three has one side of the street on Jones Road, District Four have the other side of the street on Jones Road, and on the other side of Ninety-two is on District Four on Jones Road. So, um, I understand that, um, that if money is, I think that, I don't think this is the best alternative, and, um, my community has asked that they spend it further to, uh, come up with a decision. So that's, I stand, I stand with you.
Alright, let me ask a question. Is this a vegetation, um, about? Now, this is, and I guess you said a vegetation circuit, that did they? So in the middle of it, there'll be a...
What you got is just a conceptual, but most, most likely, all the amenities around the roundabout would be brick payers and, and, which is very typical on most roundabouts.
But it would not... Not in all roundabouts, man. You know, I can imagine about paint. And, uh, uh, you know, some of that grass look nice. All I'm asking is if that's the case, who go make it?
So, I was gonna say, it really depends. Um, the department, obviously you have your traffic room, which is the brick payers. But in the center, what the department will do is we'll put some sort of vegetation that is low maintenance in that, uh, in the circuit, in the central island. Um, so, I need to... There'll be low maintenance in the central island, but we have worked with local governments partners, so if they wanna do something above and beyond or additional that meets the criteria, it means site distance and all of our design criteria, then that will be on the local government for maintenance, but the department will be responsible for those domain studies.
How much, how much of people right away you gonna have outside of what we're able to do?
So that I wouldn't be able to tell you right now. During our project development process, when we get a vetted design, that's when we'll be able to tell you what kind of right away.
Have you dealt with the issue of the possibility that we'll have a, a roundabout car issue with that?
So yes, um, in this study, we have done an operational analysis, or a capacity analysis. It measures the performance and sees, uh, grows the traffic out to that twenty-fourty, twenty-year future threshold here, and it does meet acceptable level surface, so.
So, I guess my issue is, what I'm looking at, and I understand this, I do, you know, that's people, people, but when I go down that highway, and early in the morning, and I'm seeing cars, school buses, eighteen wheelers, I'm just concerned, are we gonna slow that traffic down and call back as they approach this roundabout? And then there, there is, and there is a time indication for a roundabout. You know, if you got to be indicated that keep going right, you know, and not turn back. And so I just think that, uh, I hear what you're saying, and I'm wondering what we can do about it. But, uh, I hope that it's adequate, adequate for every type of vehicle that's going down.
Absolutely. Every roundabout is designed for a W B sixty-seven, which is one of the largest trailers, and given that it's in the area where you see a lot of those type of developments go down, it will be designed for a W B sixty-seven vehicle. But if it's designed for a W B sixty-seven or a tractor trailer, it's gonna be designed for the school bus, it's gonna be designed for the fire truck, it's gonna be designed for those other vehicles. Cause we've gotta make sure we accommodate those one state rounds.
Good luck to you. Okay, uh, Mr. Lee, and then I get it.
Uh, just, I just wanna throw this out. DC is a city of beautiful roundabouts.
A little confusing.
But, um, most of them have monuments. We have this public cards, but I would just like to look into. We're gonna be putting roundabouts in different places, maybe we could do the monuments instead of grass. Uh, we could work with our, uh, if she's gone, we could work with our marketing person and come up with some images or some things that are, uh, relative to the city of South Fulton, like, you know, so historically. You know, we can figure that, we can figure that part out later.
And that's inviting it.
Yeah, it's fair, pretty nice.
No, hold on.
Well, yeah, so, uh, so we, we, we can talk about it later, but I think that that would just be something to look at as we're putting around this.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I think we'll move on to the other.
I'm thinking about the, um, the roundabout on Cascade, Palmetto, Ridge, and Cedar Road, and, um, and how it's maintained, cause I heard that a little earlier about it's gonna be sustainable, et cetera, et cetera, and it's a hot mess. The contractors come, they cut, they don't even pick up the grass after they cut, they just leave it. Um, so the maintenance is, is an issue. And I wanna know about the land that's going to be, how much land will the state have to either purchase or declare eminent domain to create this, um, roundabout? And I'm just, I'm just seeing, um, and you giving me a visual, Mr. Mayor. I'm just seeing the trucks and the buses, particularly in the morning, and then the, and the cars with the parents taking the children, and the buses, not buses, the trucks, going around a roundabout on a two-lane highway that doesn't have great space. So, and then, and then when we look at Chestnut Ridge, and some of, some of their land has to be taken in order for that roundabout to work, and it's not gonna be enough land, and so it just doesn't make sense. And maybe, and I think that I heard, uh, Councilman Lee make mention of this, maybe if we had a visual of what this roundabout would look like, uh, that may be another issue. And I think for, you know, one point, one billion dollars, we ought to get a visual to see what it would look like.
We have a visual. All of us have a visual for a person here to me, um, I, I...
I'm talking about an actual visual.
We have an actual visual.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
She doesn't have any, it's empty.
I don't have anything, but I, but I honestly don't see why it can't be delayed until the community can see what was passed out tonight, cause they don't have that. Not gonna happen.
I'll leave a email box.
The, the way in this is not gonna change G D O's mind. The way in this is not gonna change G D O's mind, and I guess my question is, what's the timeframe, I'm, I said, let me just step out, but what's the timing are we looking at? And then what funding are we looking at forwarding? Like, what, what's the timeframe? Are we, is this something we need to move forward with?
In order to move with the roundabout, Georgia DOT requested to, for the City of South Fulton to sign and sponsor it, authorize it to move with the roundabout. Once that's done, our consultant that's designing the project will have to go into more details of what process we're gonna follow and let him go with the full design. So what you have right, right here is only conceptual layouts, and it is what we present to, to the public meetings as well. And so as we proceed with the design, you will find all the needs for rights away and so on.
Okay, so, approval you are, will afford you all the ability to go ahead and move forward with the actual design. Uh, right now, what we have is just conceptual design, and you all have made it clear that you all made your decision based on study, and you're not going to change your mind. And the option is not to do nothing. So I would recommend that we move forward to allow G D O to move forward with the actual design, and then we start working with the community. Um, to delay stuff that's based on conceptual design, I mean, they're not gonna change their mind. And so, um, I would ask that the council support, um, us in moving forward. Uh, like I said, I wanna, uh, like, the mayor wanna like, but I understand that decisions are based on studies.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. I move that we move forward with, um, let me see how to get it, how to word it. I, I move that we move forward, where is it?
With the roundabout design for highway.
With the roundabout design for highway, so they can move forward with bringing forward a actual design, and then I would, uh, that's what I motion.
There's a second? Here, you know, that motion fails for life.
I'll make a motion to hold this until our next meeting.
There's a second?
Second.
How do you move a second in discussion? All those in favor? That's passed.
Okay.
Pass.
With, with regards to this second concept, uh, it is for Campbellton Road at Stonewall Hill. Uh, Georgia DOT requested from the county and the city as well to, uh, provide, uh, more, uh, detail with regards to traffic and recommended, uh, another, uh, roundabout at that location. Uh, at this point, our consultants, uh, have concluded that the best option for that location is a traditional signalized intersection, that's what you have in front of you.
Traditional what?
Signalized?
Yes, signalized.
I think that'd be great.
A traffic signal.
I think that'd be great, that would be...
So that's why I didn't get a free...
That, that's correct. However, G D O is not convinced yet that, um, that that's the best, the best option for the location, so we're discussing that who will provide them, uh, all, all that they need in order to approve that the signal is better than the, than the roundabout at that particular location.
Go ahead, sir.
Just for point of clarity, um, they have just recently conducted their new analysis and new study on, you know, counts that they've recently completed. So we haven't had a chance to review that data, we haven't had a chance to vet that out, so that's the reason why we...
It says, it's good, man.
So what, what's your critical rating for the city to, to...
Yeah, we, we'll need to move forward with it, right?
We'll just go down and then break them back.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, second question.
Uh, two quick questions. The bridge on, uh, Oakley Road, the start date?
That's, that's very imminent, because we don't talk about these two items.
Well, in our meeting, when we came down to G D O, we discussed the bridge and how long it was gonna be out, from six months to a year, and I just wanna know, do you have a start date for that? And the other thing was, have you started the, uh, study in reference to the light, the double left turn light, uh, on one thirty-eight and Oakley Industrial?
So the second one, we have initiated that.
Okay, and, and the timeline for that is?
So we, we haven't gotten the timeline, we've initiated everything, but I can send you more details about the timeline after we get with our engineers.
Okay, and you have no information about the bridge?
I don't think there was a prepared one, okay?
There weren't?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Rob?
Just a quick question. I know, um, there was a discussion about holding, I just wanna make sure I'm clear. That there are actually two options on the table for Campbellton Fairstone Road at Jones Road? These two, they're two separate designs.
Right, the two options is the, uh, the dual roundabout and the signalized intersection.
One is signalized.
Yes, one is signalized.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you, sir. Oh, you, you'll give it, come over. We didn't have a one. Guess I, we should, we'll make a call.
Would you be able to send, would you be able to send electronic copies to the staff?
Yes.
I'll just send electronic.
Give it to someone over there. Okay, Mr. Mayor? Next item is a financial update regarding tax allocation notice, stand.
So last year, October, we asked you to allow us to borrow ten million dollars to help us to finance our expenses. Luckily enough, we moved throughout the year until we finished twenty eighteen without the borrowing given at any out of that. So that authorization is finished. We do not plan to borrow unless something comes up. If that one comes up, we have to come back to you to ask for another authorization, because we are in the new fiscal year. That's it.
So the bridge report has already been submitted, I, there are no real additional, uh, updates other than, uh, we, we made some great strides, highlighted some successes of some of our council members in the newsletter. I think you'll see that some of those, uh, things have been expanded, and that there are a lot of, uh, public education activities and concert with the council related to getting out to vote. So we wanna make sure that as we move towards November, the public is very aware of, uh, all of the ballot-related items that impact the City of South Fulton. So we'll be releasing that campaign, uh, here shortly with the guidance of council, and we're excited about the future of the city.
City Attorney's Report?
I have nothing additional.
I heard.
Uh, do you know, even if it's the comprehensive list of legislation?
Yes, I can, um, I think I've met with all council members now except Frau to update her list. So if I can, um, all confirm with her privately, and then probably within forty-eight hours of meeting with Frau.
Okay, so the comprehensive list I'm asking is for all legislation that's outstanding, or that has been approved. Uh, what is outstanding, and whose sponsor was, so we would not continue to bump heads or we, um, work on legislation that someone else is working on. So I'm asking for all legislation, all resolutions, and who's sponsors are.
Yeah, I will centralize and give everyone a copy of everything that's been presented to me by a council member.
Okay, I have a question. Yes? Um, we've asked the person... We passed a purchasing policy, and purchasing policy said that all purchases under 2,500 dollars would be approved by our...
Procurement manager.
Our procurement manager. Then we passed a credit card policy that says something different. Can you, can you tell me, what do we do with these two conflicting policies? Or maybe they say something different?
Well, they don't, they don't say anything different. So your credit card policy just puts the chief financial officer in charge of that entire process. So that means that he has a responsibility to review the credit cards, purchase the policy, to oversee the implementation, to just make sure the credit card process in general way is run consistent with your code. But you would not go to him specifically to get approval, you would go to the person who was designated based on the amount that's under the purchasing ordinance to get approval.
So any, so any purchase that we make under 2,500 dollars, we see this card?
Correct.
Over.
But under, under, under 2,500, you go to, 2,500 to 25,000, you go to the city manager, and then above 25,000, you go to the council.
That's, that's what the procurement office says. You're right. Would, I think we spoke about changing that?
Yeah, you can change, if you get with me, I can do a post amendment, we can set up different parameters.
Okay. Okay. All right, Mr. Clark? That takes you with a separate skill, right? No? All right? You completed your items, sir.
Um, we have a second session, so I would like to move that we go into a second session to discuss personnel with the state in the kitchen.
How do we move the second? All those in favor? Thank you all. Second? All those in favor? Ah, let's go.